19 school committee meeting to order. I don't know, do we have any other boards that need to call to order? Okay, and is there any public input for items not on the agenda? None being seen. Tonight, I'll just go through, we will have the consent agenda, our reports. We have the FY 2020 presentation on the budget for regular day and special education cost centers. We have one item of new business related to school committee vacancy. And that's it for this evening. So why don't we go ahead with the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Any second? Any? There's no discussion? Take a vote, all those in favor? And the motion carries five zero. Excellent. And reports, usually we start with our student. I'm gonna say Director of Student Services probably doesn't have a report today because we're doing the budget.
A big report later.
Big report on the agenda.
Ditto?
Ditto for Gell.
Me as well, no report.
All right, Dr. Doherty?
Two, two things. First is Monday, and we'll see what happens with the weather right now, but on Monday, we have the annual Martin Luther King Celebration, which will begin with a breakfast at 9:30 in Main Street of the performing, in front of the Performing Arts Center. And then the main program will begin at 10 o'clock. It's being sponsored by the Human Relations Advisory Committee and the Clergy Association and Reading Embraces Diversity, I believe? Yeah, so those three organizations. I will say that we are making a lot of decisions tomorrow on events this weekend concerning the weather. So we know, we've already shifted one event, which is the Coolidge Show. The Coolidge Show will be happening, there'll be two shows on Saturday. So it'll be a matinee at 2:00, and then the regular evening show, which I believe is at 7:30, Sarah?
7:30.
Am I looking, okay, 7:30.
Friday night, yes.
There will not be a Sunday show because of, because of the storm that looks like is coming. So tomorrow, we'll be working very closely with the Facilities Department and DPW to make some, most likely some additional cancellations or shifts in programs. And the Martin Luther King Celebration may be one of those things that changes. So that was one report. The second report is, as we talked about at the December 20th meeting, when late start was being discussed, we were also looking at a change in the RISE preschool start time for next year. And so Kelly Boswick has been working with teachers and also consulted with the RISE PTN. And last night, at her open house for new parents, announced, and then we did send out information after that, that RISE preschool, both at Wood End and at the high school, will begin at 8:00 next year. So if it's a full day program, it will go from 8:00 to 2:00 p.m., and then the half-day programs will obviously be shorter. But all the RISE preschool classes will begin at 8:00 next year. The rationale behind that, it will allow parents to be able to drop off their youngest school-aged children first, and then if they have elementary-age students, then they'll be able to get to the elementary school by the start time for elementary school, which will be 8:25.
Great.
So those are my two reports.
Okay, and committee members? Mr. Robinson?
Just briefly, last Tuesday night, the Recreation Committee met and we spent a lot of time discussing the Birch Meadow project. There's still a lot of work going on with that, so not really anything to report, just that's what we, that was, that was the substance of the meeting.
Dr. Doxer? Yep?
I just have a quick, just in addition to Dr. Doherty's report on the Martin Luther King, I just wanted to say a huge thank you. There are so many people that make that possible. But it's going on, the fourth year that Honeydew Donuts is providing the donuts, and Reading Cooperative Bank is providing the waters, and Anthony's Pizza is providing pizza for the rehearsal tomorrow of the Metco, Friends of Metco Chorus, which now has 30 kids from Reading and Boston singing together. So it's amazing. So thank you to the people that are making this, and the companies that are making this possible. And please, I'd love to see you there.
Mr. Robin?
Nothing for that.
Okay, I just have one quick report. I would just like to congratulate Dr. Doherty. He ran the goofy at Disney, so dopey.
Dopey.
Dopey, oh my gosh, I did it wrong. The dopey too.
Yeah, guess it, that's goofy and dopey, yeah.
Which means that in the course of four days, he ran a 5K, a 10K, a half marathon, a full marathon, did personal records, personal bests on both the half marathon and the full marathon, did the marathon in 5:09. And for that, you get to be, you get the dopey award. So anyway, I just wanted to congratulate him, and yeah, that's pretty amazing. So, all right, I think that's all of our reports, so we'll go right into the FY 20 budget presentation.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank again all of our administrators, team chairs, principals, assistant principals, directors for being here this evening. Already have had a very event-filled day, I'm sure. We appreciate, we appreciate you being here. We are also gonna hear from a couple of our principals this evening when we discuss the special education cost center, cost center budget. So what we're going to focus on tonight are your two largest cost centers, the regular day and the special education cost center. So the regular day cost center is the largest of 35 cost centers. It is 58.1% of our budget. The increase for this year is a 1.4% increase, and some of the major changes in this budget include the following. One is, we do have some enrollment shifts in kindergarten and first grade. We had a couple of years where, and it's our current grade one and grade two, where we had lower enrollment. So we were below what, normally we have around 300 students in a grade, and so we were, we were less than that in our current grade one and in grade two. What we have seen both this year and what we will see next year is that we're back up to well over 300, we're at 310, 320 range. What that means is, is that our grade one classes are gonna go up next year, and our kindergarten classes will, will be up next year. So there is a net addition of 1.2 FTE elementary teachers to address those changes in classes. We will see three first grades at Wood End, currently there are two, and we will see four first grades at Killam, and four kindergartens at Killam. So that's why you see the 1.2 FTE increase. In addition, in this cost center, you're gonna see also all of the contractual step column and COLA increases per the collective bargaining agreement for represented staff. There's also a placeholder allocated for salary market adjustments and for cost of living adjustments for non-represented staff to retain and attract staff. So the, the non-represented staff in this cost center would include your principals, assistant principals, curriculum coordinators, those, those positions are non-represented. We also have funding in this cost center for any curriculum updates aligned with the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. Recently, there's been some approval of the social studies curriculum framework, so you will see in your budget that there is an increase in the middle school curriculum line item, primarily because we will be adding civics in grade eight next year, which I know we're all very excited. There will also be shifts in some other grades to accommodate the changes that will be made in grade eight in social studies. We're also looking at some of the other curriculum areas. Chris and her team are doing a fantastic job working with teachers in, in looking at what other changes we potentially could be making next year. And she'll be doing a presentation in February on the whole curriculum renewal piece that, that we're moving forward. We're also seeing some increases in our regular day transportation, that's a contractual increase. We also are seeing an increase in the number of homeless students that are requiring transportation. So that, that's also reflected in the bus transportation line item. As we mentioned last time, last meeting, there is an increase in the full-day kindergarten tuition offset of 151,000. And that's because we now have, as I mentioned earlier, we are seeing an increase in tuition-paying full-day kindergarten students. Next year, we, right now, are at 90% of students that are in full-day kindergarten tuition-paying students. And we also are seeing an increase in staffing to go along with that, so that's why the offset is increasing to reflect that. We are also seeing an increase in the revolving account offset from Coolidge and Parker extracurricular revolving accounts, and that's the fund of stipends. Our students at the middle school do pay a user fee to participate in the shows. One is this weekend at Coolidge, and then we have one in March at Parker. And so this is something that we're gonna monitor annually, and we will see how this plays out. And then we, you're also gonna see decreases in the district-wide technology curriculum and professional development line items. Remember that in the override, we did have additional funding added to the balance, to the, the base budget that we proposed prior to the override. So we are going back to similar levels of, for that. We still have the professional development, the curriculum and technology, we feel necessary to move forward with that. One of the things that is different, and that's thanks to the override, is that we have a lot more in-house capacity to provide PD. So a lot of our professional development now is being provided by curriculum coordinators. Chris is, Chris is providing some of that. Our building principals are part of that. And so what that allows us to do is to be able to have less funding allocated to have, to have outside professional development. So we are utilizing that on an ongoing basis. So by object, you could see what I just mentioned as the major changes is reflected here. Your professional salaries, your clerical salaries are, are reflected with the contractual increases. The professional salaries is also the 1.2 FTE teachers that I mentioned. The decrease in the other salaries, really that's, that's your regular education par-educators. That really is a result of, we, we budgeted more than we actually spent, also most likely hiring people that came in at lower rates than the previous year. Your contractual services, your supplies and materials and other expenses, those are going down because of the three areas that are being decreased, as mentioned earlier, in technology, professional development, and curriculum, for an overall increase of The staffing that you see here, the, the, the big change, if you wanna call it a big change, is the 1.2 elementary teacher change in that line item. We did see one slight change with regular education par-educator, paraprofessional, point one. But overall, the staffing is consistent from, from this current year, I should say. And then if you look in the budget book pages 25 to 27, it breaks down in detail the, the areas that I just highlighted for you. And I know Mr. Robinson, in the past, has talked about other expenses, and you can see the other expenses are broken down on page 27, the last section. And as I mentioned, professional development is decreased, technology decreased. So I don't know if there are questions regarding regular day.
Questions on regular day. Mr. Robin?
Yeah, thank you. Could we go back to the numbers slide with the dollars? Previous one? Yeah, thank you. So I was able, I followed the, the narrative you had, but I still had a couple of questions that weren't answered. So you talked about the comparison between the adopted budget FY 19 and the requested budget, but I wanted to go back a year and compare the requested budget in FY 20 column to some numbers in the actual expended in 2018. So that's my reference point, those two columns. You know, it's kind of a, far away from people sitting in the, behind the table here, but... So for the non-salary components, I had some questions for three non-salary components, contract services, supplies and materials, and then other expenses. So for each of these, there's fairly substantial jumps compared to the actual expended in, in 2018, so I just wanna run through those. For contract expenses, if I compare 142,695 under requested budget, that's 20, roughly 20% more than 120,000 expended in FY 18 for contract services, which is about a 24% increase over the year before that. So there's been, you know, 24% increase, then we had the override year with FY 19, and now we're still ending up 20% higher than where we were before the override. So maybe just take that piece and kind of explain some of the drivers for contract services going up 20% compared to actual 18 two years ago?
So contract services, that is 100% bus-related.
Bus-related, okay.
So if you're comparing 18 to 20, you have two years' worth of contractual increases in regular day transportation, as well as a significant increase in the number of homeless students that we're transporting. So that's 100% of what's driving that increase, is you've got two years of contractual increases in the bus routes.
And was the bus contract, like renegotiated this year for next year?
It was renegotiated two years ago, it's a five-year contract.
So we're on the same contract as the 19?
Yes.
Okay.
So each year of the five years, the, the rate goes up on the bus contract. So that is purely, it's contractual increase in that, also it can fluctuate depending upon the number of paid riders on the paid route. So we have had a decrease in the number of paying students, which will drive this number up, and historically, so I would say if you look 17 and 18, we probably had two to three homeless students we were transporting, we have over 10 this year.
So it's a combination of more demand and higher cost to meet that demand from the contract, okay. Same question for supplies and materials. We can see if I compare the 433,000 number under actual expended in FY 18, it goes up 67% to 725,000, so what's driving that?
Supplies and materials is also a little bit trickier, because if you remember when we were doing the FY 18 budget, we made significant, we made cuts in the per pupil spending, which we added back in the FY 19. We also cut technology, so in order to limit the number of staffing cuts, we made cuts that impacted these line items that were added back as part of the override budget, and then carried forward into the current year.
So help, help me understand, so you're saying that's building, what's the name for the?
The building-based budget.
Building-based budget, so it's like, so we...
So I believe we had cut 100...
We cut about 100, 100,000.
100,000 out of the building-based budgets in 18?
And then we replenished it in 19, so I get, I get the 815,000, I'm, I follow you. What I'm having a hard time with is understanding why the building-based budgets went up 67% from actual expended in 18 to two years later, right? So if, if we say the, there was a component of catch-up in the override, where, meaning like we, we had fallen behind supplies and so forth for the district, we replenished that, and now we're back at a steady state, and our steady state is two-thirds higher than it was before the override, help me understand why that is.
So, so 100,000 of it would be the building base, which we replenished, and that is split across five elementary, two middle, and the high school. So that's, each one of them got their regular allocated amount. That is an item that we revisit each year, and if, the way that this works is they are responsible, we had, we had the slides from last year that we could add back for, in another presentation, where if you look at the science, where we rolled out science that was funded at the district level, now when they're replenishing all of the various books and materials, that comes out of their building-based budget. So for us to cut the building-based budgets is not a sustainable model. The other piece too, that is within the supplies and materials line are the curriculum. So we had added curriculum money within the override. While we have cut that, it is still at a higher level than it had been previously, because we had cut curriculum in prior years to balance the budget. So now we're getting more to a steady state number. So from 18 to 20 is a little bit skewed, because we had to make cuts in 18 in order to balance the budget.
Okay, so there were cuts, 18 is not a level service.
18 is not a level service budget.
No.
19 got us to level service plus.
Okay, so...
In 20, we're, we're able to readjust some of the override funding and shift some of that, but 18 to 20, you have a, a non-level service budget to a level service budget, so it's a little bit harder to compare and contrast a year we made cuts.
So, so would it be fair to say if I, if I back to 17 even, where we're 543, well, 16 is 577, but somewhere in the 500s, right?
We didn't do levels, we haven't done a level service.
16 and 17 you were cutting.
So we've been shorting...
Yes.
Building-based budgets for a while, so we take, we go back to level service of what they, we feel the schools have asked for and needed for, plus consumables for the new curriculum. And that's, that's what's driving that increase.
This year, you drove before 20?
Yeah, so I could, could I understand that, that jump to 725? If we say that's the new, we'll call it steady state, that's where we quote-unquote "should be," if that's what you're proposing, if that's the view. So if we view that, if the, if the notion is, okay, this is where we should have been at this point, then we can understand that as a combination of, we'll call it fully funding the needs of the schools for consumables for the curriculum they used to have, plus the new curriculum, which adds a little bit more consumables to what they had before. That's where we're getting this big jump.
Right.
Okay, that's helpful. Last, last question on this, the other expenses, right? We've, so fairly, fairly big number, and, and I know there's a lot of detail in the budget book that's not in the slide, and that's okay. It's about a 33% jump, and this one bumps all over the place, right? If you look at FY 16 for others...
Page one, next, sorry.
Oh, I'm on, just, I'm just on the slide that we're all looking at.
It's on page 27.
So page 27 gives you the detail.
Where it says other expenses.
So, but to help us maybe understand at a high level the, the drivers, the, so you went from 414K to 341 to 437, now we're up at 583, so it's a 33% jump, so help us understand that.
This is a similar one, if we're looking at 16, 17, 18, this is another area where we made cuts. We significantly decreased professional development, we decreased technology...
Right.
...in order to fund the budget. So again, it was not a level service budget when we did that. So if we look at 19 and 20, 19, we added the override funding for technology and professional development. The other item that is going through this is our, in software licensing and support, our Office 365 renewals, which have gone, those increase each year, so we've seen steady increases in that. But the biggest change has been within professional development and our replenishment of technology that we had cut those items historically.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. Just a, well, one observation request, and then some questions on figure, page 27, figure 15. So in the past, we, and we've had a column on there that shows the FTEs associated with each salary. I know we have a separate chart for that, but I, I think it, I'd like to see the, so if you look at, just using an example, assistant principal, you know, just put a, a column there that shows how many FTEs are associated with, you know what I'm referring to?
So you're talking about...
That is on a separate graph somewhere, but I think I was kinda flipping back and forth, it's kinda, I think it's good to have right there. That's just my, whether we don't agree, but...
Which, which is the other chart where the FTEs are?
It is later in the, it's...
The staffing chart's on page 28. The regular day staffing chart.
Oh, on the other page.
So move that column next to the, to the dollars, that's all.
So you're talking about the budgeted FY 20 FTE?
Budgeted FY 20.
Correct, yeah. Just not a big deal. My questions are, if you can go back to the slide before this. On the, on bullet number four, on the, so how many shows is that? Is that, I know there's one at each school, but...
It's one at each school, so what this is, is next year, we are looking to do, this is more of a one-time offset next year to fund basically 100% of these stipends. So it's one at the middle school, one, one at each middle school. Going forward, we don't anticipate taking this large of an offset, but as we've looked at the balances in those revolving accounts, they've grown to a point that we need to start to look at ways to take them down. So this is an adjustment for next year, and then going forward, I would anticipate that number to be significantly lower, so...
So, so, I can't remember, what is the actual stipend?
The stipends are several stipends for the production.
No, I know what they are, but how, what's the dollar?
It's approximately 12,000 per middle school.
For one show.
It's 24,000.
24,000 is the constant.
So it is that, that's what I thought, okay, that's, and that's just for one person or multiple?
No, it's multiple people, it's probably four or five people.
Multiple people, but for one show at each middle school?
One show, 12,000, yeah.
I know we, we said we're doing a deep dive on this at the high school, but...
So we're looking at it at all of them. Historically, we have not taken offsets from the middle school, but we have seen increased user participation, as well as increased revenues from the show, so we're now looking at it to say it should be able to support some of the stipends that are going towards the production.
And, and the, sorry, in the middle school, the, the fee that those students pay, is that commensurate with the, with the user fee at the high school or not?
It's less.
It's less.
I think it's, I can't, I don't wanna say what it, it's less than the high school, I know that. There's a tech fee, if you're just in the tech, and then there's the cast.
So we actually are going to sit down after this year's production and look at all of the numbers, look at all of the costs and all of, everything that goes into it to look, to see if we need to think about adjusting the fees in future years, or what else can we do for the shows. So Sarah, Ricky, and I will be sitting down later in the spring to take a deep dive into the middle school programs.
Okay, the, I just have one other question. My other question was on the, the next bullet down, on the specifically with the professional development. And I think Dr. Doherty just mentioned that we're gonna bring some of that, that training in-house. I guess I just want a confirmation that we're not losing anything that, that we would norm, just as a way to cut the budget, we're not taking away something, we're just, we're supplementing in-house people to do what we would normally pay for outside, or?
The, the needs are always gonna change based on the areas that we're working on. So, for example, and, you know, Chris can certainly add to this, you know, we're doing a lot more of our literacy and math training with our curriculum coordinators this year, rather than going outside and bringing someone outside in.
Okay.
So that's a decrease in, you know, funding that we need.
We'll still bring outside consultants when we feel we need to, but we're trying to build our own infrastructure to use our own talent here first, but we're absolutely not planning on cutting professional learning. There's gonna be a lot of learning moving forward.
And, and with the collective bargaining, we went down to the, we reduced the number of days, that has nothing to do with, with this, correct?
No, we did not reduce the number of days. Meetings, meeting meetings.
Meetings, meetings.
We went from three to two, but the, the one that was reduced was under teacher control, not...
So we're, that has nothing to do...
Correct.
We still have lots of professional learning built into our calendars.
Thank you.
I just, thanks. I just wanna, on the revolving account, so I'm just looking, if we go sort of the back of the book there, it gives you the balances of those, it shows the, what's, where we are in the... it gives you the balances of those. It shows the, what's, where we are in the balance on eighteen. I'm just sort of looking at it saying, so those accounts are still going to have a decent amount, some, a appropriate amount of funds in them.
Yes, and what's difficult with the extracurricular is the expenses typically happen before the revenue comes in.
Yeah, yeah, right, you want to keep.
So that's why you can never bring them to zero, but they are, we have seen them increase. So we want to make sure we're doing the right things with the funds that we have.
Dr. Doc's question.
I was actually happy to see that the substitute lines, it sounds, it looks like we've put substitutes back.
She's on page twenty-six.
I'm on, yes, thank you. So it looks, even from the override here, we went from a hundred and three thousand to a hundred and five thousand for the subs.
So that we did increase it slightly. That line is for long-term substitutes. So again, that is a difficult one based upon however many people are going out. We have a lot of teachers out this year, so we, it is one that we continue to monitor.
The, the other substitute line I mean you may be referring to is the one under other salaries.
It's daily.
Yeah.
That, that remained flat.
Yeah, so it was like a two thousand dollar increase.
Is that the short-term, sort of, less expected?
The short-term subs within the other salaries is the daily subs. The one up in professional salaries is the long-term substitute. So if somebody's out on, say, a term we leave where they're out for three months, that would be a long-term substitute.
And my, my concern was, like you're saying, is on the temporary subs that come in for a day so that we don't have our parers or our tutors having.
We will still have that. That is, we do build some of that into the paraprofessional line, but it's a combination of both because even though we may increase that particular line, it may end up being paraprofessionals depending whether or not we have the fill rates for the substitutes. So funding it on the budget is different than necessarily having the people in the classroom. It's a combination of utilizing the parers as well as daily substitutes.
What we are finding is, the pool just isn't out there.
It's really hard.
The economy is in a good place, and usually when the economy's in a good place, you tend to see it in areas like less substitutes available.
I guess my concern is just that we try hard to make sure that there are people other than the parers who have a job already.
Yeah.
We utilize a system where we basically put the positions out there and we have people calling. We're constantly hiring new substitutes. The issue is, it does not mean they're going to take the call when it comes in. So there, there are a lot of factors that play into that. We have, I, I hear them calling subs to come in for interviews every day. We have people coming in. It's just a matter of, they may not, they may accept it and decline the next day. So unfortunately, it's not a hundred percent in our control to actually have them take the positions.
I was glad, though, that there is funding.
We're trying to fund it. We just, but it, I will say, it will be a combination of the parers as well as the substitutes. Thank you.
Is it on the same subject? Let's just, different subject, same subject?
No, I have another.
Okay, Mr. Robin?
Yeah, so I wanted to go back to the supplies and materials line item that we talked about. I just want to understand something a little more detailed, but to, to answer my question, we'll need to look on pages twenty-six and twenty-seven of the budget book, Master's spreadsheet. So in the, in the rec, in the requested budget, which on the slide we had up earlier, we have that seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollar number for supplies and materials. That's broken down in detail on pages twenty-six and twenty-seven. So there's one number that really got my attention on page twenty-seven here, which is science. So we see science go from, you know, in year sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, from twenty-seven thousand, thirty-three thousand, eleven thousand with cuts, ninety-nine thousand, a hundred thousand, right? That got my attention. And then I went to page twenty-six, and I said, well, has that happened before? And the answer is yes, we have seen similar increases. Where? In elementary school curriculum. So if we go back to seventeen to eighteen, you see a jump from sixty-five thousand to a hundred and forty-three thousand. It, then it stays at about a hundred thousand the following year, but then this year, it comes back down to earth at forty-two thousand. So two years up, so it's like low, well, I don't want to say, but I don't want to evaluate, but it's just, you have a number, you have a number, you have a super high number, a super high number, and now you're back down to a number that looks more like the number three years ago, right? So my question is, is science going to do that after the nineteen and eighteen and nineteen, nineteen and twenty, excuse me? So we're going high, high on science, nineteen, twenty. Are we going to see it come back down, or is it going to stay up at a hundred thousand?
So what, I'll start with, so typically what, and I'm sure half the principals will stand up and correct me if I say this wrong as well. So what happens is in the first year of implementing a new curriculum, it is done out of the district level. So when you look at the curriculum numbers, I'll use no atom as an example because that was the science that we were implementing. So that is funded during the initial phases at the district level. Once it is rolled out, it becomes part of the building-based budget. So while we don't adjust the building-based budgets necessarily each year, the principals are responsible for purchasing the ongoing materials associated with that curriculum. So when you're looking at the science, that is for them to continue to purchase the material for the no atom curriculum within each building. So I do not anticipate that number at the building-based level will decrease in future years.
How did it de, so the curriculum number that you see under elementary and high school, high school does the same thing, by the way. It goes from seventeen thousand to a hundred and seven thousand, back down to fifty-seven thousand, year to year to year, right? So why, so are you saying those numbers came back down because once the curriculum was implemented, any ongoing costs of maintaining that or administering the curriculum go somewhere else?
Essentially, you're just buying the consumables at that point, not the durables.
Moves into a different category, right?
Right.
So this curriculum, this science, are we seeing the accumulation of these implementations of elementary, high and middle? We're seeing the consumables go up because each of those curriculums brings a consumables burden, if you would, that we maintain. So you, you implement in three grades, you have consumables for three grades now. You go to six grades, you have six grades. You go to twelve grades, you have twelve grades, right? So your consumables are going up as the curriculum's, am I getting that right? Okay, so we expect to stay up around closer to a hundred, not coming back down.
If I could just give you one slight adjustment to that, I think you, you have more consumables at the elementary level in science. You do have middle and high, but I think you have a lot more at elementary.
Okay.
So to, just to, oops, just can I follow that point? So to Mr. Robin's point, if you look at the elementary curriculum number, right, at, at forty-two, are we expecting that, how, how is that going to then trend going forward, given what we know right now about elementary curriculum? Do we expect that to stay in that range, or is it gonna, it'll jump up again?
So some of this I will be addressing when I do my curriculum presentation about a renewal cycle. So if you think of a clock, if your curriculum renewal is at noon, then we may have to invest a lot of time, energy and resources in either a full or partial implementation, or sometimes we have to do addition change, like with the Fountas and Penel. That would be at noon, right? Then at three o'clock, we would, we would say, okay, how is this working? Are there additional materials, resources, time, money, resources, personnel that we have to allocate to that? Six o'clock, the same thing. At nine, we start looking at, is this something we want to continue? So all of those curriculum headings, if you went content areas, are on a renewal cycle, and that's sort of what we're building this year, is where are you on that cycle? Because obviously our dollars only go so far. So for the few years that you mentioned, there was a major curriculum renewal in science. It had been many years since they had really purchased a lot of science materials, kind of district-wide. So there was a lot of STEM scopes. We, we, we purchased lots of things. We're still in that cycle of, okay, what do we need for science? How do we get all our science labs up to where we need them? We didn't have a lot of hands-on materials in K to two. We pulled out the no atom stuff. And so now that, once we get past that sort of noon schedule, which was sort of, that's not always a one-year schedule, then we, that money, the replacement, a lot of the replacement, especially in the younger grades, goes into the building-based budgets. And then the district doesn't own those pieces to it. We will then take a look at it at some point and say, well, gee, we didn't order all the materials, we only ordered X, but we really needed Y. So that's, science is a good example of that. So that's kind of where we are. Next year, we're earmarking a ton of money for middle school history and the social studies. They are going to get a ton of curriculum, time, money, resources, attention. They will be at noon. The following year, we're going to look at social studies across the district because we have two years to implement the new social studies curriculum. So that's where we are as far as that, and the budget kind of reflects those pieces. I think historically, it hasn't always been done systemically or systematically. We're moving towards that. There's always wild cards because, for instance, we weren't sure that the state was going to redo the entire social studies curriculum. So sometimes we might say, all right, two thousand and twenty-two is your year at noon, right? But it may be, no, actually, two thousand and twenty is your year because they changed things. Or we take a look at our own data and say, you know what, looking at MCAS, looking at Fountas and Penel benchmarking, and really talking to staff, this isn't really meeting our needs. And then we would up that schedule. But that's part of what our team is building, working with principals and really coming up with more of a three-to-five-year plan of where are we in that. So the money really reflects that. But in answer to your question, Elaine, is that sort of like boilerplate, like that kind of money? I think we're, we're starting to phase out of that. The high school numbers are still a little high for next year in science, but that's still building on those lab things that may have not been purchased in cycle one or two.
I think the other part that can get a little bit tricky with this is similar to, if you look at how the technology cycle works too. It also depends how we are purchasing the curriculum. So science may be very heavy purchasing items like this that you have to buy every year. Others might be licenses where we buy a three, five, six-year license. So you may have it, nothing, nothing, have it, nothing, nothing. So it really depends on.
Those cycles.
Exactly what curriculum and, and what it is we're getting. So you may see until we get into a cycle that there may be ebbs and flows of it depending what exactly is associated with it.
Ms. Sbraski then, Mr. Robinson?
So this is actually to Mr. Robin's point about that line, continuing on with supplies and materials. So I think the point about why twenty eighteen was so depressed has been covered, right? Like, that's not a good baseline here, and I have nightmares about that budget session and the principal saying, this is, we will run out of paper and pencils. Like, this is not a number that should ever be used. But something I did, because you bring up a really good point. If you look at the number from FY sixteen, it was fifty, five seventy-seven, just over half a million dollars. If you figure two and a half percent increase over four years, like in the neighborhood of ten percent, right? That brings you to six thirty-five, so you're within a hundred thousand dollars that, I don't think that even includes compounding. That's a really quick little calculation. So you're actually within a hundred thousand dollars. So thinking about it that way makes that number a little bit more palatable to me, something to, like, in terms of process to think about. And the only other thing I wanted to say was to Ms. Kelly's point about curriculum renewal. I don't think that's something we have historically had budget for.
That's correct.
So, you know, in the other point, and you, I'm repeating a little bit of what you said, but so much of this is driven by the state level. The state says, we're going to do all new science curriculum, and we're going to test your kids on it, and we're going to publish those results. You don't have a choice. That isn't something the district decides to do. You have to do that. And we went to FinCom and asked for free cash to cover the curriculum renewal. So I actually would like to see this number up a little bit because we simply have to plan on it. We have to know that these curriculum changes are coming down the pike, and when social studies is done, there'll be another thing. So if that helps at all, that's how I'm getting comfortable with the number.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Just to follow, just to clarify, so the two hundred and six percent, that's the civics?
At the middle school?
At the middle school.
Yes, that's correct.
That's where it's going.
That's yours, that's primarily a social study.
And on page twenty-seven, I'm just kind of going on some of the line items here. What are teacher resources, up twenty-five percent?
It's.
Four thousand dollars.
So it's eight hundred, it's eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm just, I've never seen that line before.
So that's all part, and one of the things I think is a little bit, and we have, we show this presentation every year, if you go to page twenty-eight, a lot of what you see on twenty-six and twenty-seven is the building budget amounts. So each year, the building principal allocates to the line items based on the needs of the building for that year. So they get allocated an amount of funding, which you see on page twenty-eight. That is dispersed through a lot of the line items in supplies and materials and other expenses. So the, so teacher resources, I mean, there could be.
Could be planners.
It could be planning books, teacher planning books.
Yeah.
Just never, I've never seen it in the, as a.
That's been there every year.
Yeah, it's had actuals each.
Yeah.
So what we've also been trying to do each year, I've been working with each of the principals to go through and look at each of the accounts and make sure we're being consistent with where we're putting items, collapsing items where we can. So we've been sort of trying to hit some of the larger dollar items to say, what is this exactly? Is there a better category we could put it in? And for some of the small ones that have a couple of thousand, I probably just have not gotten to that minute level with them for where they're actually coding things. But those typically tend to be, it, like I said, it could be planners that they're using in their classrooms. It could just be miscellaneous items that they're, that they're ordering.
The other question I had on that page was the instructional services.
So the instructional on this page.
That's the translation, that's the.
That's the translation services.
That is, we've historically budgeted translation only within special education. There is a component that also is related to regular education. This is not a new item this year. When we budgeted for it last year, we had put it in contract services. So if you look at page twenty-six, we actually had twenty-five thousand dollars in instructional services there, which is part for surveys and part of it, fifteen thousand of it was for translation. The proper place we should be putting that is within the other expenses. So we're moving the budget to be where it should be, the actuals this year will hit where it should. So that's in instances where we may have students that need menus, report cards, permission slips.
Student handbooks.
Student handbooks translated into another language.
That's overall down then because it was twenty-five, so then it's ten seventy-eight.
It was fifteen thousand, so we decreased the.
Yeah, but it wasn't clear that it was.
Yeah, so it's a reclass to be where it should have been.
So that instructional services was surveys and translation.
Yeah, and so we did cut seventy-five hundred out of the translation, looking at where we're seeing the actuals come in this year.
Thank you. Want to take questions from the, oh, well, Mr. Robin first.
You talked about our money, I want to, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, yes, thank you, yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Robin.
Thank you. So I want to talk about our time. We talked about our money. Let's talk about our time. Elementary school teachers, the addition of the one point two FTE based enrollment. Can you, can, can you tell us, maybe you can at this point, and if you can't, that's fine, I'll just put it in a written question. But if, if we didn't increase the number of FTE, full-time equivalents for elementary school teachers in the budget for twenty, would the class sizes at the two schools that are mentioned in the slide exceed the, the school committee guidance for class sizes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And do you know, by how much?
So it would end, I don't know the exact number. Julian, how many do you have in kindergarten right now?
I have twenty-three, full day, and two-nine in the afternoon.
Okay, so that's fifty-five. So we're going from two classes to three classes. So if we stayed at two classes, we would have twenty-eight and twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven is high, and twenty-eight is even higher.
The first grade, yes.
For first grade for next year.
First grade, that's really high.
That's, that's very dangerous.
At Killam, the same thing. You have a larger kindergarten going to first grade, you require a fourth classroom. We also have a larger kindergarten coming in next year, so that, that's why you see the shift.
And so I'm always thoughtful of adding FTE to our, kind of our overall size of our, of our district, because that.
If I could, if I could just add one piece, a couple of years ago when we had the lower enrollment, we actually decreased teachers.
But amidst budget cuts, did we do that?
Uh, no, not necessarily. It was, it was just, it was a shifting.
Yeah, because we had nineteen forty-two in elementary and FY seventeen, and then we, eighteen forty-five and FY eighteen. So we went from one oh three point six to one, about three FTE on that, right? So I, I just, as long as this is, is required to maintain reasonable class size, twenty-seven does not sound reasonable to me.
Yeah, unfortunately, you're also going to see, the other determining factor is classroom space. So first grade next year, we are going to have a couple of classes in some buildings that are going to be over the twenty-two because we don't have.
The space to add the classroom.
Right.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Any questions from the folks who have joined us tonight? Now we're going to go ahead into the special education. Mark was calling the finance committee to order.
He called it to order.
Oh, oh, okay.
Sorry.
He has a quorum.
I'm busy like, wait.
Sorry. Okay, so we are now going to move to special education. I think Sharon is, and Gail's going to start, and then Sharon's going to go from there.
We did just want to, as we started, to talk about in December when we did the current year update as well as the budget overview and what we talked about during our first budget presentation, that we have made certain decisions within the Special Education Cost Center to not fully fund the out-of-district transportation and tuition based upon. based upon a lot of unknowns currently within those numbers as we're going through them, looking at various placements and different items. We did mention at that time that we are continuing to meet with members of the finance committee, as well as the town manager, to make sure we're keeping everybody apprised as we go through the process. One of the items as we're going through this is all of us, the schools and the town, we do constantly look at our accommodated costs. So as we're going through this, we're keeping in touch with Bob. And as we go through, we are having conversations to look at each item within accommodated costs to see if there is any other items that may free up as we go through this. There's a lot of other items within there, whether it's snow and ice, which I felt really good about until I saw today's morning. But I didn't see Elaine did not bring the shovel, so I think we're in trouble.
Oh, I was supposed to bring the shovels.
Snow and ice, energy, there's a lot of items within there that are constantly moving. And what we do want to remind people, those numbers were set as part of accommodated costs back in the September timeframe. So we will be meeting throughout this process to look at that, and we will keep the committee apprised if there's any shifts within any areas in accommodated costs that we will be looking at. We also have been very upfront with finance committee, as well as the town manager, to say that more than likely, we will need to go back to either finance committee or town meeting, probably in the November timeframe, once we truly know what our special ed out-of-district costs are. So we just wanted to remind folks of that as we go through this presentation, that there are numbers that are potentially going to change during the process.
Thank you. Sarah?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. And that is the nature of special ed. Things change. It's, we capture numbers at a moment in time, but children's needs change. In our regular ed program that require identification, as well as children who are in programs, may require adjustments. So in going through the presentation here, we have, the largest part of student services is special education that we focus on. Make sure I can read this myself. And the central office team is myself, or whoever sits in this chair is the director. We have an assistant director in the district. We have administrative assistant support, and we are the central office team. It's a pretty lean team. And then we have our team chairperson roles, and they're our folks assigned to every school. They work on an administrator contract, and they do a lot of facilitating of the evaluation process for children, as well as the program oversight in the building. So they are essential, they are all mission critical to the success of our students. And they're also monitoring the programs for children who attend schools outside of the Reading public schools. We have a number of kids, I ran the numbers the other day, on the seventeenth, I'm sorry, the sixteenth, we had seven hundred and fifty-six students with what we call active IEPs. That means the children are engaged in special education programs, both within and in our out-of-districts. We have ninety-nine students whose IEPs are actively being reviewed. Those are what we call the next IEP. So there have been team meetings held, people have looked at how the children have done since their last meeting, people meeting the educators and the parents, and proposed a new set of educational program goals. So there are ninety-nine of those that are out waiting for a response from parents. We have fifty-five students undergoing evaluation right now. And we're required by our regs at least once every three years to reevaluate students, see where their needs are. Do they still qualify? Are our services meeting their needs? Do they need changes? So there are fifty-five of those happening right now. Thirty-eight of those are what we call initials, meaning those are children in our regular education programs whose parents and or teachers, or jointly together, feel that, geez, there might be a disability impacting this child's rate of learning. Let's take a closer look. So those children may in fact end up with individual education programs, or they may not. So that's just a snapshot in time in terms of what's happening. I can run this a month from now, those numbers will be different. There'll be more kids with active IEPs, there'll be more children undergoing eval. When we ran some numbers at the very end of December, putting together the budget book, we've added four kids, just in two weeks of school time. Okay, so it does, it does change. Some of the key items in our Special Education Cost Center are, it's very staff-heavy, staff-driven, but I'm going to talk about what some of our requirements are, the essential goals of our, of what our staff work on every day, and what are the factors that impact our expenses. So we have the main mission is really supporting the needs. We, all of our children are expected to participate in the curriculum, to learn, to achieve at the same levels as their non-disabled peers, to the best of their abilities. So we have very high standards that we're working to support the children in learning. A lot of our time goes also to collaboration. We cannot work in special education without a real close partnership in, with our general education educators and our families. We have regulations we have to adhere to. Special education is the most highly regulated aspect of our educational mission, both from the federal level and the state. So there's a few of the agencies that we report to. OSEP, I think, was out for a visit in September from the federal side. So they, they make those periodic visiting tours, but they establish regulations that we have to adhere to. Massachusetts is kind of for, in the forefront of education, both for general and special education. We're leaders in the nation, and has been a leader in special education as well. We have some rules and regulations unique only to Massachusetts that we must adhere to, and we have to constantly keep up with those. We have lots of legal decisions that occur through the whole Bureau of Special Education process, through the court systems across the nation, that then influence how our regulations are interpreted. So those we have to keep up as well. There are the mass departments, we have what's called tiered focused monitoring is coming up. It was previously referred to as a coordinated program review. That is, the federal government requires every state to monitor compliance with regulations at a minimum of once every three years, which is done through a real intensive deep dive, once every six, and then what's called a mid-cycle, once every three years. They're changing the name of it to tiered focused monitoring. But Reading is, will have onsite visitation from the state next year in that process. And this year, there's a lot of prep between now and May first that has to go on. So those are some of the things that influence us. As our teams work with the children, work with the families to figure out what to do best, they come up with what's called an IEP, which is your individual education program. That is a decision made at the team level. It isn't something that, you know, John could take a look at, or I could take a look at and say, "You know what? I don't think that's a good idea. You're not going to do that. We're not allowed to, we're prohibited by regulation, in fact." Teams are mandated in Massachusetts to make the decisions in the best interest of the child. That keeps them aligned and as close to the regular ed curriculum as possible. And again, those can't be changed, just because they might cost too much money. It's irrespective of cost impact. And those are some of the, just some of the highlights of the regulations that we have to pay attention to and be sure that we adhere to. And again, in Massachusetts, our own legislature really demonstrates strong leadership across the nation in, in how we ought to interpret our regs and in supporting kids. One example is in Massachusetts, we are obligated to provide a special education program to, what they're called eligible students, up until the point they either receive an MCAS-endorsed diploma, that's one way they exit, or they turn twenty-two. The rest of the country, it's twenty-one. So in Massachusetts, we have a whole nother year. We are obligated to educate children who need this service because they were not able to attain, because of their disability, a typical MCAS-endorsed diploma. So we have one more year compared to other states. So that's just one example of how things are a little bit different here. We also have the highest number of special education private schools in the nation. So we have a lot of intellectual, intellectually-driven economy here in Massachusetts, where that is a lot of our products, so a lot of our education, not only general and special education, is geared towards really facilitating that development in students. So it's a bit different here than other parts of the country. We have, in special education, we are required to identify the disability type that most fits what the issue is, interfering with a child's ability to learn. They can in fact have more than one disability, but it's important to know that they, we have all kinds of children with learning needs and disabilities here in our schools, in our Commonwealth, and in every classroom. We have to look at what's the impact of that disability. And it can be a mild, to a moderate, to a severe. Children can change across that spectrum throughout their educational career as well. That's why we have to be such a responsive system. We cannot afford to let a child spend a fourth grade year just saying, "You know what? He'll catch up next year." He's only got one year in fourth grade, we have to make it count. So we have to be responsive, and we have to take care of the students' needs. We have a lot of programs here in Reading. I'm, I've really been quite impressed with every educator I've met and talked with. And the parents' input and their perceptions and participation in the process is highly valued here in Reading. They have really good ideas about what will help their children. So we have the right mix to get it right for the kids every year. We have a few of our principals, I think, are going to be happy to speak and provide a little more information about some of what do these kids look like in our schools? What do our programs look like? What do we have to do? So I'm going to defer the microphone for a few minutes to
Julia's first.
I think Mrs. Hendricks to speak first. Thank you, Julia.
Good evening. My name is Julia Hendricks. I'm the principal at Birch Meadows School. And I was asked to come and talk tonight about some of the special education programs that we have in our building. Birch Meadows School houses some district-wide programs that are very specifically for children who have communication disorders that can be impacting them in terms of social interactions, learning, children who have developmental delays, and children on the autism spectrum disorder. So children from all over the district come to our school for these programs. And then within the school, we have children who are in what we call one of these programs, who are included in a general education classroom with supports for the entire school day. And we have children who are in substantially separate settings for the entire school day with some inclusion into general education. And then recently, in the past two years, we've had to create a whole new category of programming for children who don't really completely fit one model. So we've started creating a hybrids for specific children, so that we are actually creating a program. We don't have another program in the district that really matches. We want these children to stay with us because we feel like having them educated in Reading, with their neighbors, with their friends, is the right place to be. So then we are creating what we call hybrid programs, where we take elements from both programs and put them together. So to give you an idea of how our programs have grown, in seventeen eighteen last year, in the substantially separate program, we had eleven and a half students because we had a hybrid. And in the inclusion program, we had twenty and a half, so we had a total of thirty-two children. This year, we have a total of thirty-eight children in these programs, including hybrid children. And next year, with our numbers projected, we're going to have forty-two. So our program is growing, and we're actually really proud of that because we feel like we're providing children, all children, with a really solid educational experience. But what happens when our programs grow, and also what happens as we flexibly respond to student need, is it puts different kind of stress on staffing. So for instance, children in the substantially separate program have completely individualized education programs. So a certain portion of their day has to be one-to-one instruction. We also have a situation where we have a child who's doing really wonderfully in the substantially separate program, and we want that child in an inclusion classroom more. But that means we have to have a staff person who can go with that child to that classroom more. So that as we respond, we, our needs change. All of these children are, most of them are getting speech and language services. So as our program grows, we have more need for speech and language pathologists in the building. They're getting occupational therapy services, they're getting physical therapy services. So you can imagine, if you're going from thirty-two to forty-two students in a two-year period, you also have all these related services that increase. What is wonderful about these programs is that they're here in Reading. These are Reading's children, and they're being educated in Reading. What's a challenge is that we have to flexibly respond to what children need. And this year, for instance, over the summer, we got four children in the inclusion program that we didn't even know were coming until the summer. So that we had to sit down and say, "Okay, these children are coming. What do they need? How do we assign staff? How do we meet their needs the best possible way that we can?" It also creates a space situation. When you have, you think, "Oh, I have eight children in a classroom." That's not that many children, but if you have eight children with all the adults who work with them, you suddenly have a classroom that's very full and has to have six to eight individual working spaces, so that children who are working on something individually have a space to do it that's appropriate. So we have classrooms that have fewer bodies in them, some of those bodies are adults, so they're much bigger, but that they are fully packed, these classrooms. So it really is representative of, as we've changed over the years, we have less space because we need more space. We need more staff to meet these children's needs. And, you know, I guess what I want to close with, when I think about these programs in our school, is that one of the things we know about everybody is that we start building narratives about our lives when we are children, when we are very young. And you build that narrative, you make that story, based on the people who are around you. And when I look at this school, Birch Meadows, what I think about is it's not only about we are accepting each other and we are accepting differences, but it's about we're creating a community of children who are creating a narrative. They're going to grow up, and they're going to be friends with people who are differently abled with them. And they are going to hire and be hired by people who are differently able than them. It's because they will have had this experience all their lives of building a narrative where it just makes sense that not everybody can do what you can do. And that some people who may seem to have a limit actually can do more in some ways. So I think it's really important that we have these programs in our schools and that we're supporting them.
Good evening, school committee. I'm Sarah Marshak from Coolidge, and thank you to Ms. Stewart and Dr. Doherty for inviting me here tonight. I'll be sharing about our Coolidge special education programs. And also, Coolidge has been in receipt this past year of some unanticipated or unplanned resources. And I thought maybe I could also speak towards that and give an example of how those situations do occur in our district from year to year, as well as talk more about our programming. So first and foremost, I don't really feel as if I can speak of special education in isolation. I must mention all of our students and staff, because all of our students across all of our buildings have various forms of strengths, needs, and identities. All students bring a special diversity to our buildings, and no matter the profile of a student, be they receiving special education services or otherwise, we as educators consider all students to be our students. Our goal as educators is to meet the needs of all students to the best of our abilities, structures, and resources. The phrase "it takes a village" is very appropriate when it comes to education. I mention this because while I am talking tonight about special education structures and processes, they do not exist in isolation of general education, and I see this as a real strength of the public school environment, just like Julia was saying as well. So at Coolidge, our special education program consists of three learning centers, one at each grade level. We also house four of the five programs in the district. We have We have the compass program, which consists of students who have substantially sub-separate programming and severe autism and other specialized needs. We have our connections program, which is a program for students on the autism spectrum. We have our crossroads program for students with cognitive deficits. And we have our therapeutic support program, which is a program for students with emotional impairment. And while we may have students, as Sharon was saying, we kind of prioritize what, what the number-one disability may be, students might be put in a program, but we have the ability of using our resources for, to meet the various needs of students across these programs, such as social skill development, pragmatics, speech and language, and things like that. So at Coolidge, we have a total of four hundred and sixty-five students, ninety-eight of whom are on an IEP right now, forty-four learning center and fifty-four programs, that's twenty-one percent. We have ten special education teachers, twenty paraeducators, one counselor connected to the program, a team chair, a speech and language pathologist, and related service providers. So having this mix of programs and type of diversity in our schools is truly a special thing, as students of all learning styles have so much to offer to our learning environments. Our schools are all the richer for this type of diversity. As we know, our goals as educators is to meet the needs of all students. We build educational programming and provide supports to make academic success possible and to build social and emotional capacity for all students. We also strive to create learning environments that allow special education students maximum access to the public school learning environment in the least restrictive way. In the special education process that Sharon spoke of, we balance this dedication towards inclusion where appropriate with also letting student needs drive the structures and supports that we are then required to provide. For general education students, when numbers or needs change, we can almost always absorb these changes with the personnel and structures that we currently have in our buildings. I realize we had an example today of kindergarten and needing more resources, and that happens as well. And it does, but we can really anticipate those changes when you're talking about general education, because we really, it's really based a lot on numbers of students. And we're able to plan for that. For special education, changes in student need and changes in the numbers of students receiving special education services or programming can often be absorbed and included in the staffing and structures that we do have in place. But it is not always as easy in the moment and in planning. Instead, these needs could potentially have an immediate impact on resources, including staffing. This is driven by the IEP team process. If a team decides that a child needs additional services or supports, such as moving from a less restrictive to a more restrictive learning environment, it is our legal obligation to respond and to fulfill that need. Every year, I do want to reassure you, our administrative team works so closely with the director of student services, with our team chairs, to learn about our next year's population of students. We've already done that this year. We try to understand the needs of our incoming students. We try to plan programming, staffing, spacing, according to all of those needs, and budget appropriately. Despite all of our best planning efforts and intentions, our needs for resources can change as student needs change. I'd like to give an example, maybe, because I know sometimes that helps, but I know I'm, I usually don't write things down and I kind of go off the cuff, but I'm a little more organized today, so I apologize if I'm going a little longer. But an example at our, at Coolidge is that last year, we had a program that consisted of one teacher, four paraeducators, and ten students. And none of those students were in eighth grade, so we had that same population coming back this year. But to join that population, we all, we had seven new incoming students. Two were new to the program, meaning they were going from a less restrictive to a more restrictive environment. And of that group of seven, we had, some of those were actually substantially sub-separate, so they were actually needing most of their instruction in a sub-separate classroom. So that, we all of a sudden didn't quite have the staffing that we knew that new population needed. But one thing we also do as an administrative group is look at the whole and look at where our resources are relative to our students, and we really try to move resources to where the needs are. So we felt like we had it very well planned as of the budget process, and we had it mapped out, and we'd, I would, we thought at the middle school, we would be getting some resources from the Feeder Elementary School, which all made sense. But a couple of things happened. Those extra two students who came to the program added to our numbers. And in the elementary school, they ended up having other students who then moved from a less restrictive to a more restrictive environment, or moved into the district, such as are some examples of how those needs change. And they then needed to keep their personnel to, to absorb their growing program. So we both basically had growing programs, and we both needed to utilize our resources. And therein, Coolidge needed to advocate for more resources. So that's just an example of how these things can happen over time, and as much as we do really try to work very hard to anticipate, you know, students change and needs change. And, and that is our, our job. Certainly, there are situations, I know people in the district sometimes understand outside placement or not as much, but, or wonder why that's not an option or is an option. And it's certainly very appropriate for certain students. But whenever possible, and I know you heard this from Julia as well, we do all we can to create learning environments and programs to meet the needs of as many students as possible that we can. This is a cost benefit to our district, but much more importantly, it's also a benefit for all of our students to be in the least restrictive environment, which a public school is, relative to private. And in our environment, students with disabilities grow and learn along non-disabled peers. They all have something to teach each other, from academics to empathy to inclusion, and this model parallels real life, both here in Reading and beyond. So we want to make this opportunity available to as many students as we can, as a school and as a district. So I'm so, I'm really so very proud of this district and our special education programs and our staff, as well as our general education staff, who again are working hand-in-hand with special education for all of our students. And I'm so proud of all of our students who make our schools the wonderful places that they are in all of their diversity. So thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you tonight and to share my Coolidge experience. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Julia.
So some of our numbers in special education are captured here, and this is as of December twenty-eighth, thirtieth?
Thirty-first, yeah.
So when I talked about some of the numbers having changed in those two weeks' time, that's reflected here, not reflected here as well, but I wanted to mention that the number as of yesterday is different than what you see in the slide. But this does show some of the changes over time that have occurred in, in Reading. These numbers, for the most part, are taken from our SIMS reporting, as well as our database that we use to track and develop our education programs. The overall percentage in Reading is not that different from the state average, so that's remained fairly stable, between sixteen, seventeen, some odd percent. The overall headcount does not tell the whole story of what we need to do for our children, and I think part of what Julia and Sarah spoke about was why the numbers don't tell the whole story. Sometimes it's the complexity of the needs as well. We have greater, we talk about who's out of district and who's in our schools. You can see that in the two thousand and five, two thousand and six school year, there were seventy-three students counted as out of district, and that now we have less, there are sixty-two. One might ask, why, why if we have more in and less out, why are we spending more money than we were back then, you know, apart from just cost of living increases? And a lot of it just speaks to the intensity of the students and the staff that's needed to ensure they're able to learn, engage, stay a full participant in our schools. We talked earlier about some of the performances that go on at the schools in the regular education class center, where all of our children are eligible to participate in those, and just as they might need support during the school day, during a recess, or a lunch, or a math class, they need support there as well. And that is part of what we have to provide and support, and we're, we're happy to. It gives them the full experience of being a student in the Reading schools. So while our out-of-districts are down, it, this number doesn't account for all of the children who aren't attending school here in Reading, for whom we have to monitor. We do have children who are in schools other than special education-approved schools, whose parents have made decisions that, you know what, I'm going to have my child educated in school X or school Y. They're on an IEP, and we still are obligated to follow, monitor them, offer services, hold annual reviews, reevaluate them. And when we get to a point, or if we're at a point with a particular team and we can't come to an agreement, or the parent isn't in agreement with what we're offering, we do still try to work through those differences of opinion. We have different dispute resolutions, options available to both the families and the district to help resolve those differences that we try to work out. So there are a number of children not captured in these numbers here, for whom we're still actively working with the families to try and figure out what's the best approach for the children. And you heard both Julia and Sarah talk about what they call the least restrictive environment, and what that is commonly referred to in special education, is we're required by law to consider that whatever we're going to do for special education, it is done first in the general education classroom and with the general education curriculum. That's our primary obligation, to be sure the kids can participate in that. And that means that the children are in all the classes. We are not able to just cluster them all in one classroom and put one teacher from special ed and one regular ed, and then we have a class of twenty-four, twenty-five children, half of whom are special ed. That would not be considered a best practice, and we're not going to employ that kind of practice. So we, the children are spread out amongst our classes, so it becomes a staff-intensive model. We also pay attention to what's out there in the research. The Commonwealth did commission Dr. Thomas Haheer out of Harvard for several years in, I think it was two thousand and eleven through two thousand and fourteen, to evaluate and assess what's happening in special ed in Massachusetts, because our legislators have been hearing from people all over the place, parents, school systems, all kinds of advocacy agencies, like you've got to do something different about how we fund special ed. It is a challenge in our Commonwealth. Why is it always going up? So he did a three-year study and investigated a lot of that. The reports are available on the department's website. If anybody would like them, just send me an email, I'm happy to send you the links. And he looked at how do children achieve in special ed? And one of his findings was, the more time they spend in regular ed, the higher their achievement, hands down, every child across the board. So that's one of the reasons we look at general ed first. What do we need to do to provide supports and services for those children? He's not the only one to have reached that conclusion. There's studies across the nation similar to that. One of his other findings was around out-of-district placements versus in-district. Where, where do the children reside who are in these out-of-district placements? Are there any patterns, anything that we could glean from who these children are? And one of his findings was that children in out-of-district placements, outpaced children who lived in communities with a higher socioeconomic average, were far more likely to be in an out-of-district placement than those children from poorer communities. And disabilities have no, they're not related to zip code. So one would think that it would be relatively comparable. It wasn't. So why, why is that? And, you know, it's, there were some conclusions he drew that perhaps it's due to the education level of folks in a higher-income communities, that they are better educated, they are better informed, they know how to access services. They also have higher income, so they have the ability to secure additional supports to help them figure out what to do for their children. And those supports might be in the form of consultants or advocates, independent testing, or the ability to fund, you know, their own decisions as to what they'd like. So that was one of his findings. And he also found that there is evidence to support the impression many educators have that children with emotional needs and disabilities are far more prevalent in our schools today than they were even ten years ago, and that children are, are being impacted from their emotional impairment at a younger and younger age. So we can have children in our preschools and in our kindergarten and first-grade classrooms who are, it's be, they don't have the emotional knowledge yet to be able to control their emotions, their behaviors, their feelings, and often have a communication impairment, which I think Julia mentioned. So how do they communicate what's happening for them? They use their behavior, their actions. It's all communication. So that often requires a lot of immediate and intensive intervention on our part. So those were some conclusions, independent of what's happening in Reading, that, that Dr. Haheer found in his report to the legislature. So that's part of what influences, it's not just the headcount, it's what our population is bringing to the table these days. So our class center is our out-of-district programs. You know, they do exist for a reason. There are children who, in fact, need to be educated in a highly specialized program. They tend to be students that we would refer to in our world as a low incidence population. There's not a lot of them at a particular age or disability type, so they, they have a right to be educated with similar peers as well. So out-of-district programs are an important part. And when, in fact, a team determines that a student is out of district, then we look at those that are approved. There's a very extensive approval process they have to go through with the state to be classified as a approved special education school. And we also have what are considered our public day programs. They're run by collaboratives or consortiums. And that's where a number of school districts get together, they jointly operate the collaborative. Reading belongs to both the SEEM collaborative and the northeast, North-
Shore.
-North Shore Education Consortium. And they run programs, we have children in both of those collaboratives. There are other collaboratives out there as well, that of course we can access and do access. And the collaboratives establish their tuitions in working with their boards of directors. That's who establishes their tuitions and what they're able to charge, and their board directors are comprised of either school committee or superintendents only. So they are very much an extension of the public schools, and Reading, I believe, has appointed their superintendent to serve on both of the boards. The private schools that are out there, they have to go through an extensive approval process, and how their rates are set is through the state agency called the Operational Services Division, OSD. They typically are allowed a polar increase each year, somewhere in the two or three percent range. But once every six years, they're allowed to request what's called reconstruction through the state. And what that means is that they're saying to the state, you know what, our kids have changed. We need different people, we need different services in our schools, and it's going to cost more money, and this is what we think we should be able to charge. And they do, I don't know of any school that doesn't take advantage of that opportunity to request that their rate be substantially increased once every six years. By law, they're also required to notify any of their consumers, which is your public schools, that they are going under this. So we are put on notice that they're requesting a rate increase, and then we are able to attend a hearing to hear what they have to say about why they would like that rate increase. Typically, we get thirty days' notice, thirty calendar, not schoolwork, but calendar days, that this is when the hearing is. If you have anything to say, you can come. It's difficult for people in my role to be free for a whole day, thirty days out. Typically, we're scheduling three weeks out, we're pretty well booked, so it's hard to get there. But if you don't go, the approval is pretty much all set. In my career, I've gone to a number of those, and it's been quite startling to me what they claim they need. So one example in a private school was, they had twenty children more enrolled, they wanted two more nurses. If our nurses were able to add to their staff for every twenty kids, we'd have a whole room full of nurses. And, you know, we, I question that, as to why, in fact, they felt a nursing need would have to increase given that type of an enrollment, and they weren't able to justify it. You know, I had another program say that they felt they needed a full-time ESL teacher and two more counselors. And when I pointed out, geez, your enrollment admission criteria says you will not accept children for whom English isn't their first language, nor will you accept children who have emotional needs and require counseling, so why is it you feel you need that staff? And every question that's asked, the school has to answer either in person, right then and there, or in writing within ten- or in writing within ten days. So it, it helps to be there to ask those questions, but it's difficult, not everybody can get there. So we're, we're on notice right now. We have public hearings coming up the end of the month on three different schools where some of our students attend. So we're gonna try between our team and team chairs to get there to find out why they think they need to reconstruct. But I only give you that level of detail so you have some understanding that these prices are set out of our control. It's not, we can't negotiate it. We have the private day and the residential programs. We have children in both. Sometimes we have children who start the year or right now, we're like, yep, they're in a day program, it's going well and midway through next year, it has really deteriorated and the child now needs residential. So you can imagine when you go from a program that meets seven hours a day to a program that is seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, that it's quite a, an increase. So there's a lot of factors that go into why this cost center is so variable and volatile. One of the other factors that we're always, that every district struggles with is that the foundation budget formula that was established a couple decades ago, which is really quite complicated. I think there's only three people in the state that understand it. Underfunded special ed, day one, grossly. Not just by a couple hundred thousand dollars, millions. So that has compounded this funding deficit for decades. I just heard on the news last week, they have another commission to take another look at it and they, they made that attempt seven or eight years ago and it, it kinda crumbled at the end. I think it just is, it's difficult to wrap your, your head around how do you make those changes? Now Reading doesn't rely tremendously upon that itself because of the, the local resources. However, what you need to understand is if the state is having trouble with this, they, they don't have the flexibility for other funds to help districts in other ways where we might wanna be innovative, be creative, start some programs. Seed money to start programs has, has disappeared. You know, eighteen years ago, the district I worked in at the time, we were able to apply for a competitive grant to help support the education of kids with autism. They only funded ten districts, we were one of them. And that was supposed to be a five-year grant. It dried up after three years. And it's like, okay, you're on your own. So we were, we had to scramble and figured out how to fund it. But that kinda money is gone. Professional development money is gone for special ed. It's just not coming this way anymore. So that, that's why if the foundation formula can be adjusted to some degree, it'll help us in other ways, in an indirect way. So we have a recommended budget within here. It is a, a big portion. I completely understand why it is and that there's only so much money to go around. So if this piece gets bigger, another piece has to shrink. Every conversation I have with educators in the district, certainly with Gail and Chris and John over the past three months, I think, however long it's been. I am always conscious of if I ask, someone else has to be denied. So I just want the community to understand that this is not, not necessarily frivolous ask and one that we haven't thought through in a painstaking way around what we need to operate our special education department. But my, my role within this school district is to ensure that our students with special needs have their needs met. So I'm, I'm required to advocate for that and, and feel passionately about it. So our increase includes some of what's included in the gen ed side of the budget relative to staff increases and what is needed there for bargaining, the collective bargaining agreements indoor, non, non-represented personnel. We have our behavioral health coach is part of our budget for next year. We have legal services, which I do wanna point out is not just special education. It is for student services overall, if we can remember the umbrella of our department. So there's a lot of legal consult that goes on that is not special education-related. And I think that this increase is just to try and get us aligned with some of the past spending that's been required. And we do have some known increases, you know, so the, the fact certain students as to what we knew back in December when we put this together, we're in there, are part of this. We have our professional development being restored. Part of what had to occur over the summer in order to fund some of the staff that Julia and Sarah spoke about that were, were needed, were essential is had to reduce or eliminate some of the other special education line items. So it is not reasonable to think that we wouldn't have professional development restored. And beyond, so I spoke about the legal already, okay? So this gives you some sense of the difference, similar to the, the regular ed cost center, where the money goes. So we have our salaries professional, our clerico. Other services. Other salaries, thank you, the paraprofessionals. Contracted services, that includes our partnership program with the Wakefield Public Schools for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds called our post program. The other expenses, and then, then we have our total, which is a seven point four percent increase overall. So some of this detail, I believe, also mirrors what's in the budget book.
Yes, yes, it does.
An eye chart, thank you. Sure is for me.
And it's, it's reflected primarily the par educators and the teachers is where the increases are and the behavioral health.
Yep.
Mr. Robinson? We're onto questions right away, Mr. Robinson.
The chart that shows the number of students on IEP.
So that's page thirty-two?
Yeah, it's not a number.
Oh, with the slide.
It's a question.
This one here? One overtime?
This one, yes.
Yep, yeah, page.
Whether we can show this or not, but I'd be curious. Couple things, how that, like, just take this year for an example, or eighteen to nineteen, what, how, what, what's in each program? We just got the aggregate number there of seven fifty-two, how that's split out by the different programs? And I'd also be interested to know, we have students that are on IEPs that are just using the learning center. They're not in a pro, I'd be interested in those, how, who those are. And that, the reason, it, it kinda just tracks with the staffing for the different programs and the learning centers.
Part of your, part of your answer.
I couldn't find that chart I looked for.
Yeah, part of your answer is, uh, part of your answer is on page thirty-three. It's not the full answer.
But the only one that you can figure out is the post program. Is that the chart you're talking about?
Right.
Yeah, so, this is one, so.
Yeah, we, we have had that chart in the past and.
I think that's important to be able to track the staffing in the different programs.
Oh, right, just run that chart by program and school across versus the way it is.
Yes, part, part of the challenge of putting that chart together is that you have students in multiple programs in the same building.
Right.
So it, it's not, it's not as easy as a student is in this program versus this program. Like it, it could, for example, there are students who use the services of sometimes all four of the programs that Sarah has at that school. So that's the tricky part of, of trying to create a chart.
It's like the athletic numbers where your students taking multiple sports.
Right.
I, I have been trying to gather that data and it is a moving target. I don't think it was as clear-cut perhaps as in the past. I think Julia talked about her twenty and a half and her fourteen and a half and.
So that, that would've been the hi, the hybrid?
Hybrid. I, I think there are more hybrid students than perhaps in the past.
All right, so then I, I would be interested to know of those numbers, what are just solely, there are a lot of kids on IEPs that are just using the learning center because of, they need extra test time or, that would be.
Right, and even our learning center children, their needs change over time as well. So at the elementary level, for example, students in the learning center often receive explicit reading instruction. They have writing instruction, they might need math instruction. So there's some content-based instruction as well.
I understand, I, yeah, but.
And at the, the high school, it's more academic support-like.
So I guess.
Yeah, I can keep working on that.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do our best to.
I have some other questions, but I'll only ask one now, but just, uh, because I give other people time. But just, if you can go to that, that last chart that.
The one that was more densely populated yet?
No, no, I'm sorry, the last one that had the bullets.
Back one? That one?
Next one, there, well, I, I know what, anyway, so you, we talked about the, the six-year adjustment, we'll call it.
Yep.
And I guess I'll make a comment. When I look at that and I hear, I say all hands on deck. I don't care whether you can't get there or somebody needs to be there with the talking points that we need to get. So we, it's not, we can't have, or we couldn't get to the, and I'm not directing that at you.
I understand, yeah.
That, that to me is just, I mean, that's a prob, and that, that's a problem that was created by the state legislator side, so. But people have to be, someone has to be there representing and, you know, we may end up with whatever it is they say they, but we need to get our points out there.
Right, right, we need to understand what's going, going into their ask. And sometimes the requests are legitimate. We see children changing.
I agree.
It wouldn't be unusual, but some of the asks are not appropriate. And one of the things the department has done in the past couple of years is they will allow you to participate by phone, by conference. Previously, you had to physically be present. They also moved these hearings to the Department of, of Education, which for us is convenient because it's Malden. But you know, cause you, they used to be at the school. So you could have a student who's in a school down in Brewster on the Cape, so you're, you're talking a whole, whole day and then some for a one-hour meeting. And they don't like it when you ask a lot of questions and push the meeting out. But I agree, so we, we're, you know, working with the team chairs and we are putting together a list of questions we wanna ask and have answered as well as who can, who can participate even if it's through the phone conference.
Can I, I just wanna ask a follow-up on that though. I mean, I've, so what's the success rate though of the districts? The districts who attend and provide the feedback? And if the placement is asking for a thirty-six percent increase, what's the, does OSD really reduce that to thirty-four percent? I mean, what are, what are the outcomes? I, I don't, I, my knowledge is that it's not always that fruitful.
It is, it varies.
Okay.
It has been my personal experience in participating in a number of those conferences. So I was at one, one hearing and asked questions and the school did end up getting a significant increase. I don't think it was as high as they had asked, but it was still significant. I was at another where I was not alone, there were probably a dozen other people in my role and the school withdrew their request because they had to answer so many questions. And I think in the end felt like, you know what, we can make it work with what we have.
Okay.
So, and it ranges everything in between.
To Mr. Robinson's point, it's, we, we need to be there and we need to ma, and hopefully other districts are making it a similar priority.
Yes, I, I usually talk it up with my colleagues whenever I have the opportunity. And we'll share the letters, you know, because we may not have a child at school X right now that's going through reconstruction, so we'd have no idea. But we might next year have the child there.
Right.
So you know, we, we need to collaborate and, and work on that.
Dr. Doc sir?
First of all, thank you for this very inclusive presentation. It's really helpful, thank you. One of the questions that's sort of haunting me is that I know, I think it was last year there was the requirement introduced and I think it was with the IDEA grant.
Proportional share?
Yes.
Proportionate share.
Where is that in these numbers and are they still enforcing that?
Yes, it's still a federal requirement that we expend. The way they calculate what's called our IDEA money, which is the federal entitlement grant money that I referenced, that they were supposed to be funding when they first put the law into place forty-five years ago, that, oh, we'll give you forty percent of whatever it costs from the federal government. They've only funded that, I think the highest level they've ever funded is seventeen percent.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen percent.
Cause they, they had the caveat that, you know, if appropriations.
Oh, yeah.
Can, can do it. So anyway, the IDEA grant is an entitlement grant. However, it, it doesn't even come close to meeting the needs. But the, the way they determine how much money Reading is going to get is based on a head count of residents. There's a portion of our free reduced lunch figures that go into that calculation. And then they also count the head count of students who attend schools in Reading regardless of their residence. So Reading's largest private school is Austin Prep. So children who have educational programs that have been developed by their school, their town of residence, so let's just say they live in Wakefield and they go to Austin Prep. Wakefield had to identify them as needing an IEP, proposed an IEP and the parent said, you know what, we're, we're going to Austin Prep, thanks, but no thanks. But now they're on the Reading head count. We are supposed to be providing support services to children who attend private schools with IEPs with the dollars we receive from the federal government for Reading. And that proportionate share is calculated on the number of students who are enrolled at Austin Prep who have current IEPs. So that gets recalculated each year based on their numbers of children and our numbers. So we're working with Austin Prep to try and put together some student services plans, which is different from an IEP. It is not an individual entitlement service for the proportionate share like an IEP is, but we have to expend X number of dollars. And you know, there's, they're hiring an executive function speaker to come in, which would be very beneficial for their students with IEPs, March twenty-fifth. So I'll be sharing that out there with folks that evening. If you're interested in that, mark it on your calendar and stay tuned. Through our proportionate share dollars, we have some assistive technology consultation available to the school to help students with disabilities through our assistive technology consultant, Erin King. So those are just a couple examples. It, it is a requirement, it hasn't gone away.
So that is within the IDEA grant itself, it is not within.
It's not.
Anywhere in these numbers.
It's not.
It's not local funded? And also one of the other parts too that we get asked a lot is we do not give, physically give them the money, they have to do everything through us. We contracted, we paid for it, so we control it, but it's, it comes, it comes off the top of the grant.
So we use our administrative resources and.
Yes, we do.
To do that.
Yep.
Provide all that service.
We do.
With our dollars.
We're required to. We calculate that towards our proportionate share.
Okay, and it comes out of the grant? If you're looking at the back of the budget, it would be.
Not, not, not this budget.
Right, the IDA grant, money, it would be, right, not.
So good question.
Okay. Any, another question or?
I do have another question.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I know, I see that the behavioral health coach is within the special ed budget. Can you talk a little bit about the function of that coach? Is it solely, we've heard a lot about the collaboration between reg ed and special ed and how it, the programs only work when our teachers are working together and our families are working together. And so I'm seeing this behavioral coach and hearing how all kids have needs and wondering if you could talk a little bit about how that coach goes across how their job addresses the needs of both gen ed and special.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll let Chris speak to it more because she has more of a, a history than me, but I just wanna say that in order to do a good job in special ed, part of the special ed regs require we do free intervention supports, this pre-referral process. So I, I believe that the behavioral health coach works a lot in our, our gen ed classrooms with our gen ed teachers, providing support, coaching. She also oversees all of what we're, again, another legal requirement that we have to have staff trained in. um, that we have to have staff trained in, um, de-escalation techniques, and if needed, physical intervention techniques. Um, and she provides that training, tracks all that training, um, which is really quite a, um, data-intensive job. And I don't know if you want to speak about it.
So, a, as you know, um, through our School Transformation Grant, we've done a really, uh, big job before that, and then during the process of really spending a lot of time and resources on multi-tiered systems of support, so she's a big part of that, and that resource is available to everyone, so principals call on her, uh, for behavioral support or consult, work with families, sometimes she works directly with families. Um, she does a lot of training, as, um, Sharon said, some of it is required training, then we also do, as you know, um, we train every employee in the Reading Public Schools on youth mental health, she does all of that training. For all of our new staff, um, she, she organizes our trauma-informed training, which we have had great success with. She also does a lot of data-keeping as far as, um, state-regulated, um, data points that they're looking for, as far as around behavioral concerns, we have to report on them monthly and then annually, and so she collects all of that, she does, um, parent training, which this year she's done a nice job of working with the Rise preschool and having regular parent training sessions, um, we also had a, a, a training for middle school to talk about uh, the reproductive health unit, um, so we're, we're, it's really a multi-tiered system of support for teachers, for administrators, for parents, and of course, the ultimate goal is to work with students. Um, she doesn't do a lot of direct service work, mostly observing, evaluating, and giving support to teachers or staff members, um, as far as next steps, this is something we could try, we also, as you know, have two BCBAs in the district, so she works in concert with them, in fact, they share an office, their home base is, is, is a shared office, so, um, she, she currently is on maternity leave, uh, she just had baby number two, Rocco, um, but she will be back in, uh, February, and she'll be back on, she literally got everything organized, uh, for these two months while she would be gone, and will be back on that, um, and we're rolling out more training, as we speak, we're, uh, going to have her participate in more behavioral health training to our teachers, so that they can really support students.
I just, can I just clarify on this, so is that position on page in figure twenty-one, page thirty-six, or not? I just want to.
It's the, it's the, um, like six.
On page thirty-six.
Yeah, where, where, I'm trying to, I'm looking at the text on page thirty.
It's called the District Administrator Students of Support Services.
Okay, I, I just wanted to clarify, that's what I thought, so that Behavioral Health Coach is that District Administrator of Support Services. Thank you. Mr. Robinson, you have some questions?
Yeah, a few comments and questions, could we go to the, uh, chart that shows the enrollment over time for Special Ed? Two slides back.
The first one. Which is figure eighteen?
Yeah, it's figure eighteen in the budget book.
Yeah.
There you go, so, first question is just about the student population, so there's two representations of student population, there's a number of students on IEP, and presumably a subset of those who are out of district, right, so everybody who's out of district is also on an IEP?
Correct.
Do you understand that? Okay, so, when I go down the column of the number of students, which is the grand total, right, I see seven years, if I counted right, where there are increases in the number of students over a previous year, right? And I see six years where there are decreases. How did decreases happen?
And are you talking about the total number or the students out of district, which column?
Total number.
The total number, so children, I did mention that they are reevaluated once every three years as a minimum, and at that time, they have to requalify, so at times, children exit special education at that time, and they don't remain on an individual IEP. Um, there's also children who move, move out of the district, as well as children who move in, so that would be the, the best explanation I would have for why those numbers change.
And students that graduate.
Yeah, so there's graduation, or aging out, there's moving out, and there's reevaluating out.
Right.
Those three, do you have any sense of what proportion of each of those, you know, kind of in aggregate in your time, looking at, I know it's been short in the Reading district.
I can, I can certainly look into that and see if I can dig up some of that data, some of what I found in some of my data research that I've been doing since I've been here, is it's, um, it's been difficult sometimes to figure out how numbers have been counted in the past.
Right.
Um, and even when I was running reports earlier in the year, as I've delved into some of those numbers, it's like, well, wait a minute, that child's double-counted. So, um, so I mentioned what we call our next IEPs, sometimes you have a child who's in both states, they have an active IEP, they're getting services, and there's a new one proposed, so that if the numbers weren't run with the right filters, the child might show up twice, so, um, the more I delve into the numbers, the more I, I, I see areas that I want to dig a little deeper.
Yeah, and to.
So I can look into that and hopefully be able to provide a reasonable guesstimate.
I, I, I wouldn't ask for, there's a lot that we ask the administration to do, that's, I, I just wanted to get a sense of it, I'm not asking for you to do more work on that one. Um, this response is fine.
I would, my, my guess would be based on my prior experiences in other districts, not Reading-specific, is that most of the children exit in grade twelve. Out of those three categories, that's probably the most.
Where the most of the change, yeah, so we could also just look at the change in, in twelfth graders and, yeah, it's, it's not critical.
And if you have a smaller class coming in, in kindergarten and first grade, then went out, then your numbers could be smaller for that reason.
I, I just, just wanted to get a sense that there, there is, is, you know, we, we are looking closely at the reevaluation process, and that we're optimizing that for students, and getting it right for that student, and that there are some students who, who, whose needs change in a way that is less resource-intensive, and that we're
Correct.
Okay, we don't have kids on cruise control, we're really paying attention to how kids are doing every year.
We are, so we might have.
And at least every, whatever the appropriate period is, three years, I guess, is what you said.
For the testing, every year you have to look at their program, every three years you have to test and requalify.
So I, I, I'm just making sure that, pushing on that a little bit to make sure that that's being done, and it sounds like it is. Um, out of district, then that sub-population there, so, I mean, just, numbers don't tell the story here, right? Um, completely, numerically, it's easy to see that the number sixty-two is fairly close to what it was ten years ago. You know, fifty-nine, fifty-one, it's bounced around, we don't have anyone, numbers in the seventies since, you know, two thousand FY eight, right? But, there's no guarantee in the future that it couldn't change. Is, I, and I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused by that, and, and, and the question that Chuck asked about when we, when we turn the page and we look at figure nineteen in the budget book, and we see the number of students in special education program by school, and then the number of, like, in-house programs that we heard, um, the principals talk about tonight, that you talked about, right? Are these in-house programs that we've developed, the Crossroads Compass Connections, everything listed in figure nineteen? Is a, are, are they at all connected to trying to reduce or change the number of out-of-district placements? Because the number hasn't changed, but the FTEs that we use to support these programs has changed. Are they connected, or they, or they not intended to be connected?
I would say that there is a connection for some of the students, that if we did not have some of these more district-wide intensive staff programs, the children would then require an out-of-district program because of the types of services, the level of services that they need, if we don't provide it here, they're still entitled to receive it, so they need, we would then have to look at the collaborative programs, or the private, um, school programs. And, um, we still, even with the programs we have, there's, you know, families who make decisions that, I'm still going to opt into an independent school for my child's education, um.
So the number we don't see there is the number that you might see in the absence of what we've invested in and built.
Correct, and, and, and often, when a program is started or initiated, where someone in my position might say to the superintendent and to the CFO, um, you know, I'm seeing a change in population, I'm seeing this cluster, I have five students with ASD leaving the preschool, going to kindergarten next year, and I don't see a program that's going to meet their needs, we need to plan for it. This is what it should look like, and, you know, there's then a presentation typically to the school committee to get approval, to move forward with a new program, and you're, you're doing a cost analysis there, if we don't do it here, this is what it might cost there, but over time, it, you often don't continue to track, what is the cost impact if we didn't have these programs?
Right.
So those numbers would be greater, so I'm, I'm grateful you asked that question, because we lose sight of that sometime, and it's not just the cost benefit that we do the programs for, it's the educational benefit as well, we have much tighter quality control where we educate in-house. Um, we can be much more flexible in meeting the kids' needs, um, rather than the private school that has to wait six years to get the right staff as their kids change.
So, I'm, is it okay if I?
Yeah.
I'm kind of on a roll here.
Go ahead.
So, the other column, so the percentage of students on IEPs then versus the state, doesn't really tell the whole story either, is what I'm hearing, because it doesn't speak to the particular, um, nature of the needs that these students have, you can't just count them and say they're all, well, seven hundred and fifty-two, seven and twenty-four, and say, well, that's more, more or less need, it's just more or less individuals who have a need that requires support, and the nature of those supports can change, so even though we're somewhat, I would say, in line with the state averages, sometimes a little below, um, that doesn't, these numbers don't somehow capture or, or score in any quantitative way what the specific needs are of these specific individuals.
That's an accurate observation.
Okay, so, um, I want to pick up on Mr. Robinson's point earlier about the in, in-house programs, if you would, the Crossroads Compass Connections, um, et cetera, so, do we, the, the, I, I was actually interested, Mr. Robinson, the opposite of your question, so you asked about student enrollment in each of the programs, I was interested in the FTEs supporting the programs, which is kind of, you know, well, what do we put into the program as opposed to who's receiving the program?
I said that.
Did you, okay, well, I'm still interested in it.
Are you looking to align the.
Did you, directed something, can I just make a quick observation on, so,
Please do.
The, I only, my only concern with the, the, your last question about the, uh, you know, the out-of-district numbers relative, so, I go back to, John, you can probably answer this, in two thousand and seven, we only had one in-district program.
Yeah, we had, we had much fewer programs then.
So, those numbers aren't coming down because of the programs we're adding, I, I don't think there's any correlation at all.
No, and, and I, I was trying to understand that, right, that we've, we've built these programs over about the same time period we see on these, these on this chart, but we don't.
Although, the numbers may go up if we did have.
They could have been higher, but they, they haven't, they haven't stayed flat because we've added programs.
And, and, and what I thought of was that what we don't know is what the number would be in the absence of that.
Right, exactly.
If I could.
If we didn't build these programs, we don't know what that number would have been.
If I could speak to the point you made and the question you asked, so, similar to the challenge of students being sometimes in multiple programs, we have staff that serve multiple programs in a building, and Coolidge, and I'm going to go back to Coolidge again, and have, I've had many conversations with Sarah about, you know, when the staffing requests are coming in, where is this staff person going? And she said, well, period one, two, and three, this staff member is going to be in this program, and three, four, five, in this program, and so, that's, that's difficult to quantify, where the FTEs are going for each program.
Yeah, and, and, and I guess, help me understand the, the dual enrollment idea, so, if we look at, so if we took Learning Center out, so it, does it work that students may be in, let's say, one of the Crossroads Compass Connections, uh, Bridge, TSP, um, and Learning Center, right, imagine that's a not-uncommon pairing. I guess my question is, other than, if you take Learning Center out of that discussion, are there students cross-enrolled, or, or, maybe you can't tell me this, it's just a yes or no question, not an how-many's question, but are there students enrolled in multiple programs that are listed above post in that list of, below figure nineteen?
Yes.
There are, okay, and then there are FTE allocated to multiple programs, or fractional FTE allocated?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and I, I guess I'd be interested in like the aggregate of, of all of, would it be possible that, if we ask the question in writing for, to provide an aggregate of how many total FTE go into this program, how many total students are
Into this.
enrolled in all of these programs together?
Seven programs.
Is that calculatable, or is it split with other?
We, we could probably come up with some reasonable numbers, but it wouldn't tell the whole.
Yeah, you're answering my question with your.
My, my concern of doing that is that it's, it's a, it's a number that's going to continue to change.
Right.
And then, it's a number that's going to be out there, and people are going to point to it, and then say, well, you said.
Right, no, it's fair, and it probably changes within a year even, when you calculate it.
And I'm not, the amount of staff hours to put that together.
No, it's, it's, you've answered my question, this is easier to have this dialogue than ask questions that you don't have time necessarily. Um, this slide with the Special Education College Center by FTE, could we go to that one, please? Um, slide seventy-five, I think? Next one, thank you. Um, so.
Figure twenty-one.
Right, yeah, thank you, so the students, so if I compare the slide we just left, which is figure eighteen, I believe, right, and I look at.
Nineteen.
Uh, no, I meant eighteen, eighteen in the budget book versus this, so what I'm looking at is, did the student population served go up or down? And then did the FTEs go up or down with that, right, so when student population is going up, our FTEs going up, when student population goes down, do FTEs go down? The answer to the second question is no.
The answer to the second question is most definitely no, because it depends on the needs of the individual child.
Of the student.
You could have a decrease.
The number.
I'm going to point to Zach, when Sarah was talking about it, you may have students leaving, and one of the best examples is you could have students leave that are on IEPs, leaving each of the elementary schools, I could have five students leaving elementary, going to middle school with absolutely no change in the elementary school, but additions at the middle school.
Okay.
Because if you look at the amount of hours that would change from a teacher or a para for one student leaving versus five students coming in, it's, it's not, you, you can't look at it that way, so it, it really is a student-by-student, need-by-need analysis.
Now, that makes a lot of sense, so you've had student populations seventeen, eighteen, nineteen go down, down, up, and then we've had the FTEs go up, up, up.
Yeah, it can really be tied to the intensity of the needs of the student population that is making that up, and where they're coming from and going to also impacts that.
I mean, I see that, I also see the continuous climb of that first line over sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, right, while the enrollment's gone up and down.
I can give you a, another example, which I've used a couple of times in conversations, um, with some of the town, uh, officials, is that next year, uh, we have forty Rise students on IEPs going to kindergarten, which is a very high number. It's one of the higher numbers, Kelly, I believe, that we've had in a while. Most of the time, those students are going to two schools, Woodend and Birch Meadow, to the programs, uh, which is what you heard Julia say, that she's getting staffing increases next year, and her program continues to grow. But we're also seeing those students go to other schools that may not necessarily have, uh, programs or, or staffing right now that can, that can service the students, so Barrows, for example, we're adding a staff member at Barrows next year, because they have a, a number of students going from Rise on IEPs to Barrows. So, but in Rise, we can't move staff from Rise to those schools, because we've got three-year-olds coming in that need that staffing, so.
Well, and, and the students at different ages are different skill sets, right, too, so you might not want to do that. I, I think I'm just looking for an assurance that, that we talk a lot about the dollars, and I also want to ask questions about the time to make sure that collectively, we as, you know, people that are being as wise as we can be about investing other people's money in our, our students and our, our, um, administration, that we do that in a way that is respectful of the time, these FTEs as they grow, as well as the money, and, and it sounds like all of that is occurring, I just want to ask the questions.
Items that we do, which most, I think all the principals can attest to it, we've spent countless hours meeting individually and as a group, um, I will say Sharon has been instrumental on that, where we, and I always point out Julia, because she is near and dear to my heart with her Excel spreadsheets, we went, person by person, grid by grid, and looked at exactly who was where, where they were moving, what we could move, and we honestly sat there and said, oh, we can move fifteen para-hours from Birch Meadow to Coolidge, we can move X to Y, so we spent, we met with every single principal, team chair, and went, person by person, for what we know, in any instances where we had groups moving, we looked to move staffing with them, but also had to be cognizant of situations where the population coming up differed from the population leaving, so I, we, we spent, that was probably the biggest piece of putting this budget together, was going through every staffing scenario.
I'm very glad to hear that.
Yeah, very student-specific, you know, the, the resources follow the student as the student. the student moves along. And then just, and just the RISE preschool alone, the numbers of children moving up to kindergarten, it's a big difference when you go from a half-day preschool, or even a full-day preschool, to kindergarten. That's what you need to do for resources.
Last question on slide twenty, seventy-four?
This is the same slide we're on?
No, it's the dollar slide. This is the time slide.
What'd you say, seventy-three?
Seventy-four, seventy-four. I think it's the previous one.
The previous one, the legal, the legal.
So, the bottom line, right, so-
The seven point four.
My math could be off here, but if I just look at that bottom row, left to right, that, that seven percent is pretty much year over year over year, right?
Right.
You know, if we had a ten percent jump from eighteen to nineteen, maybe the override was part of, maybe we made some, some cuts to get seven percent out of seventeen to eighteen, we replenished them in eighteen to nineteen. But, you know, our FINCOM guidance is not growing at seven percent, right? And I know this is a small, much smaller part of the budget, but it is a part of the budget growing much, much faster than, and for, for all the reasons we've talked about, and not saying that shouldn't be as it is. I think that's something we all need to look in, into and ask our questions about and evaluate. But this is a high-growth area, as you point out, and I appreciate the diligence, Ms. Stewart, that you're applying to this. It's, it's a short period of time. You really have dug in very quickly.
Like data analysis.
So, we, we appreciate that, you know, what you bring to this on, on very, very short notice, and getting up to speed on, you know, over seven hundred IEPs and out-of-district placements is really remarkable. But, you know, this continued kind of doing absolutely everything we can for these students and making sure that the resources are optimally allocated and only asking for what the students need, it's really important in a high-growth area that's going to get a lot of focus on the funding side. And it's something that's going to be something we're going to need to manage without, you know, kind of, and I like that we had this night set up with the regular day and the, and the special ed kind of together, because those are, that's total, total student population. And as you point out, we're here to serve all the students and do it in a way that's mindful of resources. So I think, I think the high growth is driven by factors we can't control, student need, we can't control transportation costs, maybe we can negotiate contracts and so forth, but we have to keep the contracts we have, and there's a certain price to transportation. And then, the out-of-district placements, which are reset every six years, and we should participate in that process where we can. I like the phone idea, dialing up and giving our comments and, and trying to do whatever we can to force service providers to justify their cost increases, but at the same time meet our students' needs. So, I like what I've heard. Thanks.
We, we go over all of the contracts with our out-of-district placements. While they set the rate, we have to establish an individual contract with each of them, and I went over them with a fine-tooth comb. I added language, I added things to them to make them more accountable for what they're doing, got pushback on some, and said, you know what, this is, this is what business is like for us in reading schools. The kid's going to go to school, and he's going to tell us if he's not. You know, you're going to give us a phone call. It's not going to be an, it's not going to be a day, an attendance sheet thirty days later where he missed twenty-three out of thirty days. It's not going to operate that way anymore. So, you know, we've been very diligent in trying to balance. It's, it's a, it's a funky part of education where we are obligated to serve the needs of children who learn differently. And it is, it costs money because it is staff-intensive. But you know what? It's the right thing to do, and these children will grow up to be very productive citizens in Reading and whatever communities they settle in. Reading is a highly desirable community for people to move to, a lot of that reason being the school department. So you have a lot of people coming to this community for a lot of reasons, and that means you have the whole spectrum coming to the community. And we're always balancing the needs of the student against the needs of the taxpayers. We are, we are expending tax dollars. We understand that, we get it. We are diligent in, in our obligation to do that wisely, and, and only in a manner that's required, and that's the right thing to do. Our team chair people are high-quality, highly educated, experienced people. They, they work through this process with their staff every, every day. And we meet on a weekly basis. We talk about what are the challenges, what are you seeing, what can we do differently, so that we have some commonality and uniformity about our practice. I like data analysis, I like systems analysis, so that's one of my goals between now and June is to try to be sure we have systems in place that are sustainable in the way that we examine and look at children, so that there's, it doesn't matter if you're at the Barrows or the Killam, you're going to have a similar experience as to how this works out.
And I will say, we're also making sure, in addition to all of the wording changes and making sure the agreements, we then, when we receive the invoices, whether it's the transportation invoice, which is twenty, thirty pages a month of, it is reviewed student by student, day by day, rate by rate, to make sure that everything in there, and every month, we're going back and challenging and questioning and getting credit. So it is a labor-intensive process where we're making sure everything-
Right, you charge us for seventeen days, our attendance has fifteen. The child was there, why would you charge for those two days? So, we are being very diligent about that.
Thank you. Ms. Brasky?
Sort of a global comment, if that's okay. I just really appreciated the approach tonight. It's, it's daunting, because seven point four percent, to Mr. Robinson's point, is, is a lot of money and not sustainable, and not within our current funding. So, it's a very problematic situation we're in. But what I, what I like and appreciate about what happened tonight, particularly hearing from the principals, is a real explanation. I think of all the areas of education, this is probably the one where there's the greatest opportunity to educate parents, taxpayers, residents, town meeting members, and the broader public about how special education works. It's highly complex, highly regulated. I was looking through these numbers, the overall goes up a million dollars. What percentage of that is out-of-district placement? What percentage of that is FTE increases? And it's like a third out-of-district, out-of-district tuition increases, a third roughly FTE increases and salary increases, and twenty percent is increased pairs, which is also staffing. So, what's frustrating about that, but what matches the narrative that we heard, is it isn't one driver. It isn't out-of-district expenses, it isn't we're hiring too, you know, a bunch of new teachers. It isn't one driver. It's the entire enterprise across is growing at this, this kind of rate, which is just frustrating, but mirrors what we heard from the principals, which is that the programs are growing, the needs are becoming more intense. So, so it was a very helpful way to explain it. That's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson?
So, I have a question on the, the legal services. So you, in the narrative, it, it says that we're restoring them back to the, similar to what we've done with other line items, restored it back to the seventeen to eighteen years. I guess, I'm not real comfortable with that without knowing, what have we, because it's a big number, and what have we, what's current year actual app versus what we have in the budget now? And do we really need to do that? Just to say we, we, we went back to those old, historical years?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you asked that question, because I did have it in my notes, but didn't speak to it in the detail I had prepared, which is, in order to come up with what do we think we need for that particular line item, I looked at, at where we are in our actuals. I also looked at what is the number of IEPs that we have that are in current disagreement or dispute, so that we may need some legal advice to help moving forward. I also took a look at the, the number of discipline questions that we typically need, some input from our legal counsel on. And just in the short time I've been here, there's been, I don't know whether to call it a high number, because I can't, I don't have a reference point, speaking this is my first year here, but-
I think it's, I think it's a little bit higher than-
I think a little bit higher. So, it's, you know, probably a weekly phone call to consult. Sometimes it includes a record review, you know, as well, that the, the attorney may say, I'd like to see the records on this particular incident. So that, that's all time. So I, I base that calculation on looking at the number of areas that we're in current disagreement, what our, our actuals to date have been around discipline, training, needs, and then multiplied that out to, to get to June and into next year. Because it does take time sometimes to work out programs that are, there isn't agreement, and, and it's not unusual for that to then go into the next year to work things out. So that's part of where the, the dollars came from, and of course, working with Gail on prior year actuals.
And one of the items that we looked at is historically, we have kept it at the eighty thousand dollar budget, and we have done transfers from regular education into specula, special ed for three years to cover the shortfall. So we're also trying to look at items where historically we have had to do trade cards.
No, and I understand you said that earlier about another, I guess, when the school committee budget comes out, I'd like to see that narrative a little more robust than just we went, you know, such some, add some of the points that Sharon-
That I just mentioned.
Okay.
In there.
I think, just building on that, that, because this is, I think, another item where we, as we just talked about, where that was increased throughout the year. So this number, these numbers in seventeen and eighteen were not originally one forty-six or one twenty-seven, right? Those, because that's the actual expenditure, so there were transfers. And maybe just, I mean, not everywhere, but maybe at least the ones that we've just talked about, there could be just some just asterisk to say that this, there was a transfer potentially on that, you know, for a couple of items. I'm not asking you to go back through it, but at least there were, this one and one other one we talked about tonight, where part of the, part of the explanation of the large increase was that there, there had also been transfers. And what you're trying to do now is budget for an amount that is more realistic rather than the lower amount, and then, you know, recognize we, we keep doing this transfer thing, although we didn't last year, evidently.
So I just have one other question. So my, my other question was, I didn't see it in here, and it may be I, I missed, what are we, what type of guidance is there for circuit breaker at this point? Where's that show up in here? I didn't see it.
Circuit breaker is part of accommodated costs?
I knew, yeah, okay.
So, it's the net number, so the way that works is out-of-district transportation and tuition are part of the accommodated cost. So we are-
What percentage, though, are we using?
We are using fact certain, because we have circuit breaker year in reserve. So for next year, we are using, what do you mean, FY-
Nineteen.
Nineteen in FY twenty. So where you, we know how much circuit breaker we have.
Sixty-five or-
It's a little bit higher. They're about sixty-eight to seventy. There are-
Yeah, I think it's-
Last year, they increased it. They were hoping to get to seventy-two percent, but they're not there yet.
Yeah, I think it's one seventy.
So the one fortunate aspect we have is we actually budget circuit breaker fact certain, and then we have any potential upside if they go from the sixty-eight to the seventy or the seventy-two percent.
Thank you.
So, I have the same question. Where, so circuit breaker's not here, part of the accommodated cost, did you say that it was reflected in, was it out-of-district tuition and transportation? And so you just took the net?
It's part of, it is net.
So you took the actual cost minus the circuit breaker from last year, and then put the net number in here?
Yep.
And those are big numbers, net.
The circuit breaker, we are fortunate that it did go up from about eight hun, about eight hundred thousand last year. It's, it's up over that for-
But we're still left with, the, the big number is this, it's three and a half million net out-of-district tuition, and then transportation?
Transportation's about one point three million.
So, can we, you're still looking at four to five million, and you're getting an eight hundred thousand dollar, only eight hundred thousand toward that.
Transportation is not eligible for circuit breaker reimbursement.
Okay.
It's just tuition.
So, what was helpful to me in past years, where we could see how the circuit breaker support from the state had dropped off, and that I think accounted for a lot of the struggles we had over the, in the Special Ed Cost Center in past years.
And it started to pick back up again, which is nice.
I think to that point, though, we, I'd rather see it as a line item-
I would, too.
Re, uh, deducted from the, from the cost, as opposed to, that just showing the net number.
Right, I agree with that.
The other thing about circuit breaker is that when the law was initially proposed, districts were to receive four times the foundation reimbursement for in-district programs, and three times the foundation for out-of-district programs. So there was an incentive built in for districts to formulate and create their own in-house programs. And there was strong advocacy from the private school side not to make that distinction, and in the end, the legislature adopted the, three times the foundation across the board. There was no differentiation for in-district. Had that original law passed, all the programs that had been created here, you'd be getting reimbursement back for those students. So, you know, whatever opportunity you have to share an opinion about that with your legislators might be helpful, because that's something that people, when they talk about, we want to revisit circuit breaker, and they talk about, let's include transportation. I'd much rather see folks include a higher reimbursement rate for your in-district programs.
So, two quick points on that. You, first point is, I heard Governor Baker talking about how one of his top agenda items this term is, is to recalculate the formula for student, for local, for local budget assistance, we'll call it, right? So, point one, it's on the governor's mind, apparently. So that's, that's good. Point two is the research that you just shared about how students that remain in a regular day environment as much as possible-
Do better.
Do better. That sounds like a really good letter you could write to, to lawmakers with, hey, there's this research, and it would really help us, and let's go back to four to three instead of three to three.
Happy to do so.
That would be great.
Written those before.
We'll all sign it.
Yes.
With you.
Yes.
Okay.
Ghostwriter.
Was there any other questions? That will take some from our guests. Mr. Doxer?
Thank you. Mark Doxer, just a question on figure nineteen. I'm thinking about the out-of-district placements. It looks like more than half of them are either grades eleven, twelve, or post-grad.
Yep.
And, and also the enrollment, I guess, in post is small. Just wondering, is there an opportunity to find programming for the older students that could bring them back in district? It just, it seems like it's such a large number. So, I'm looking at the bottom of figure nineteen. Out-of-district, you've got grade eleven is eight, grade twelve is seventeen, post-grad is nine. So that's thirty-four out of a total of sixty-two out of district. Just wondering if there might be an opportunity there in the future to, to look into a program, and maybe post isn't, isn't addressing that need right now, obviously with just one student in it.
I would have to look at what those individual student needs are for those, those seventeen that are in the twelfth grade, as to why, if there's a commonality about what their needs are, which would create that opportunity for a program. So I think that's a, you know, a good point. Sometimes the students, so if we looked at, say, the ninth grade, where there are three, are those three kids of a common need, where we could create and build a program back here at the high school? I, I'm not sure about that. But, good, good question.
Well, and then, and then the other follow-up question I had to that is, is this something, I, I don't have last year's budget books, but if we look back at the prior years, is there usually an increase in the later years?
Yes.
Right? So, does that tell us something about not just the student need, but the student kind of development stage or age?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, to all of those, that their, their needs do, do change. Adolescence presents its own set of challenges for your typically developing student, and the kids with special needs, it gets compounded. You also tend to see students who's, were perhaps more mildly impacted by their disability in the younger age, able to compensate due to high intellect for some of their disabling condition. But when we get into middle school and then high school, we're asking them to synthesize things at a higher letter and level at a much more rapid rate, so that the neurobiological makeup can't always keep up with the demands that we are now asking of these older students. So you start to see the breakdown a little bit more in, at the high school level. And there's a fair, fair number of disabilities that are under that emotional umbrella, that don't present themselves in a significant way until adolescence. So you then have that nexus occur. But we can certainly take a look at any of these numbers at a particular grade and say, geez, do we have a cluster where we could look at a program? Any other questions? Yes.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Very informative. I very much appreciate it.
You're welcome.
My name's Tom Wise.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Sorry about that. A couple of questions here. One thing, most recently, in October of last year, the legislature and the governor signed the decoding dyslexia law.
Yes, yep.
I haven't seen anything in the budget that accounts for that, no verbiage that accounts for that. Maybe it doesn't come into next year's budget, but maybe the following year budget. Can you comment on that a little bit?
I can. So that little- I can. So that was signed into law, I believe, October nineteenth or twentieth. And it is going to require that every district provide universal screening for students at a young age to determine if they are at risk for dyslexia. It is intended to be a law that would be implemented through our regular education process because, um, and I believe they have targeted kindergarten as the year. Um, excuse me. So we will have to implement some type of screening. Once the law is passed, we then wait for the department to come out with the regulations that guide us in our practice. Chris and I have been already doing research and talking about this. I know a couple of parents had shared information with, um, I, I think myself and then also I think with Dr. Doherty last fall. And I did kind of look into some of the resources that were shared with me and, and wasn't really able to get information back. But we are continuing forward in talking about, we have to be able to do this. Um, the, I did see on the department's website that they are looking for us to implement this by next school year. So we're kind of waiting on the regulations, which typically come out with a public comment period. So then we'd have an opportunity, you know, John would get a notice, um, Chris would get a notice and myself that these are out there. What do you think? Give us feedback. Um, but my, my guess is that they're going to allow some level of flexibility in how we choose to screen for dyslexia. Um, we're not the only state that's doing that. Connecticut's ahead. Alabama has some resources out there. So, you know, I've been researching other states and what they do as well as the International Dyslexia Association.
Okay, so it, it is something for next year.
It will be implemented.
Have to be implemented.
Yep.
So, and having listened to both budget forums so far, the favorite word is placeholder. Is there a placeholder somewhere in the budget for that right now? Or are you not expecting it to be an incremental cost?
There will be a cost. How much, I'm not sure, but we do have testing and assessment dollars set aside that are used both for our special ed evaluation and we'd have to find some way to use those dollars to fund, um, any new implementation program for dyslexia screening. It's screening, it's not testing.
Okay, so there's some budget, but there may be, we should maybe think there might be a reallocation at some point in time to adjust if there's an incremental cost that's not forecasted right now.
Right. I, I, I would not predict it would be a massive cost increase for next year. But, um, because my, my experience tells me that the department typically gives school districts some wide discretion around the tool they choose. I, I would be stunned if they dictated a tool. And it may in fact be a tool we already have available. Uh, we just have to use it in a different way. So we're just, we're not too sure how it's going to play out. And we want to do the right thing for the children. So we'd like to have something that we think is not going to over-identify children and unnecessarily alarm either educators or parents, or under-identify. And when you're testing five-year-olds, the chances are already pretty high. You're, you're, they're not going to be, um, as responsive in exactly the same way you'd like them to give you the information. So.
Yeah.
We want to get it right. We might have to trial a couple of things next year.
Yeah, I'm sure the committee is well aware, but dyslexia has been one of our biggest challenges in this area for a while with the Bridge Program. And early identification's been one of the biggest problems for that as well. So I would encourage you to continue to think about that and push more forward, be more proactive in that. From the communication to the committee, I mean, for communication to the public, what you're planning to do there, whether it's MTSS at K through two or whatever it is, it's going to be the, the way in which you're going to implement that. I would also be asking that you provide feedback on how many students you assess now versus how many students you're going to have to assess. So it's going to be all of K going forward or all of K and one and two to catch up or whatever it is versus how many you've already assessed and you already know where they are. Um, there's definite budget impact, teacher time, parent time, whatever it is to do the assessment that's necessary there.
Yep.
That's one. Um, second question I have is with regards to the, the legal services and settlements. If you look at the munis and you look at the DART discretionary, uh, the word that's written in there, it is specific to settlements. And you got, and the wording that you have used in your budget is very general and you're allowing other things to go into that than settlements, which makes it a little bit hard to compare towns appropriately. Is there potential to move the non-settlement money into a contract line instead of a, set, instead of the settlement line as it is right now?
Are you talking about the legal or legal dollars associated with settlement?
Yep, legal. Currently, it says in the budget it's legal services, but when you follow that back to munis and you follow that back to DART, it goes to code fourteen thirty-five, which is specific, very, very specific to settlements. And so it makes it, you muddy the waters, for lack of a better way to put it.
Okay, I would have to say that's not intentional. I'm certainly not intentionally muddying the waters.
I don't think you are. I'm just saying it's just a, a point of note.
Talking about sort of what the information in the ledger versus the budget and, uh.
They align perfectly, they align perfectly.
Right, but I mean, the tools are different, right? This isn't, this isn't the ledger, you know, the, munis is the ledger, so.
The tools are different, but they're very specific when it comes to reporting to the, the federal, I mean, the state government, right?
I'm not sure.
That's something we can look into. We haven't.
Thank you. Um, one, one more question, I think, um, and actually maybe a point. When you talked about, um, the increase of the forty-nine thousand in the, in that line in particular, um, and you actually, I think, Elaine, you referred back to two years ago when it was a hundred and forty-seven thousand. Two years ago, we had the OCR settlement that drove that hundred and forty-seven thousand. We have three outstanding OCRs. Is that part of the budget right now or do you need to allocate more for that potential OCR that's out there right now?
Yep, the, the OCR did, um, close the investigation in a November twentieth letter, which I believe might have been in an early December school committee packet. So there are no more outstanding OCR complaints.
Okay.
There are a couple of, um, services that are yet to be delivered that have been promised to, um, to families to finish it. But OCR was satisfied that we've met our obligation.
It's great to hear that they're closed. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything else on the budget? A reminder, so, um, for school community members who want to submit questions in writing, actually, the deadline is noon time tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes.
Um, so, and, what, I don't know if there was anything really that came out of tonight. Just might, if, if you feel like, just clarify with Dr. Doherty, send a little note or, um, remind me a couple of things. I know that I noted that I wanted to clarify. Um, we have another item on the agenda. So we are done with the budget. So, and I, I would like to thank all the, um, staff and teachers and principals who are here, uh, this evening. And, uh, I think we still have some budget liaisons that hung in here, did double duty since six o'clock, I think. And, um, also our FinCom. So I want to thank everyone. Our next agenda item is the school committee vacancy. So, um. Oh, there it is. Um, so I, I need to just sort of like lead the school committee through, through this discussion. So as, uh, folks know, actually, it was, um, just before our last meeting, we received a letter of resignation from Sherri Vandennaker. Um, and I think all of us are aware, and she sent a letter to the community, actually, the letter's in this packet. You know, that, uh, her, her dad, her father had been very ill and passed and, um, hadn't been able to join us as she wanted to and very, I think it was a very difficult decision for her to make, but she did, um, resign. So there, um, I've spent a lot of time talking with, uh, the town clerk, the town manager, town council, Mrs. Dowd, uh, while Dr. Doherty was getting his dopey award.
Is there an award for that?
I'm so proud of that because I can barely run three miles. So, uh, and, uh, so in the end, the situ, and also consulted with our NISC, um, field director, Dorothy Presser. So the situation that we're really in is that we're so close to the election on April second that by the time we would be able to get through the process with the select board, and by the way, the select board actually leads the process, it would mean that a person who would be appointed would be able to attend exactly one school committee meeting on March twenty-first before the election on April second. So, uh, the way that the process works and it's driven by Mass General Law primarily, chapter forty-one, section eleven, is that the obligation of the school committee is to notify the select board of the vacancy. We have to specifically notify them. And then it's, um, up to them to, um, execute the appointment process. And if there is, if they, they can actually choose not to execute that process. There are no consequences. And as Dorothy Presser explained to me, this has occurred several times, once in her own community. Dorothy was on her Lynnfield School Committee for twenty-one years. And so this did happen, um, more than once, actually, while she was there. So, uh, but the select board is the board that would call the appointment process or not call the appointment process. So what I would like to do is, um, if Ms. Bruski can read the motion and then we can have some more discussion.
Allow the school committee vacancy, which occurred on January seventh, two thousand nineteen, to remain empty until the election on April second, two thousand nineteen, and authorize the school committee chair to inform the select board of this vacancy and vote.
So whatever the outcome of our vote is, I'm gonna, I'll work with them. I felt like it was important for us to take a vote so that I could clearly communicate, um, not just my perspective, uh, to the select board. So that's what I would like to do. And I do, I know in our packet, it has our policy. I actually do have, um, Mass General Law and the, um, statements that came back to us from town council in the email exchange with Bob, Dale, myself. So if there, you guys, if there's any questions, I can try to answer them and refer to that information. But basically, um, uh, I will read, basically Dorothy Presser said the same thing to me that, um, if, uh, there, that there is no, there is actually no specific consequence for the select board if they do not, um, put the, uh, appointment process in place. And therefore, if there is a political policy or a practical reason that the, the select board doesn't wish to make the appointment, they may simply refrain from doing so until the next election. The thing is, they have to actually make that decision, but they would like to know how we feel about it. So that's why the motion is as it is. I know our lawyer is looking closely. But I have the text of Mass General Law, chapter forty-one, right here, if you want to see it next.
You put this in the packet next week.
I, I should have.
So.
Yeah.
What was, what's the rationale for not filling it before the election?
Because it's so close that by the time we could actually get through an appointment process and the board, you know, the notification out to people and then the select board pull all of us together for a meeting, given that we have, you know, FinCom meetings, select board meetings, all the budget meetings. By the time we could do that, um, the, our meeting in February is actually February seventh. So I don't, we wouldn't probably get through that process before that meeting. It would be just one meeting. And then the person would be basically off unless they were elected. So there's all, there is, um, the election process is separate from the appointment process. So Laura Jem, the town clerk, all, has already last week, um, put notice out and the papers are available. So there is a two-year slot. Um, so we currently have two, three-year, uh, terms and one two-year term that will be on April second election. So it's just practically, um, and the board, I think, you know, it's, there's, there's, whenever a board is, you know, down a, a member or, you know, there, there's an issue, it does put a little bit of a burden on other people. And I think, you know, we've been basically in that since the, definitely the beginning of October, at least. And I think we can make it one more month. We, I, I, I do believe that we had pretty much, you know, come to the conclusion, given the situation, that we were going to make it through January. So this is, um, basically two more meetings before the April second election. And the person would only make one. Ms. Bruski.
So, um, I think, I hear everything you're saying and I'm kind of thinking of it as a cost benefit. So what's the cost of filling the vacancy and what's the benefit? And I think I tend to agree with where you're at with it. You know, it's really onerous to do. You have to post the position and you have to allow a certain amount of time for residents to submit an application. They have to give a resume and then they have to come to a meeting and it's, you have to interview and you need the logistics of joint board meetings. So it's not a simple or fast process at all. Um, so that's the cost. What's the benefit? And I think you're right. When you look at the calendar, the benefit is a person able to attend one, maybe two at the outside, but probably just one school committee member in the capacity before an election where the voters decide who they want to represent them. I think, I agree that the, the extensive work to fill the vacancy doesn't seem to match up against what we would benefit from it. And I think your other point is really well, well made as well. The, the fact of the matter is we've been functioning as a board of five for several months. It's not optimal, um, but at the moment, we're all very plugged in and I think getting the work done. So I, there's no reason to believe we can't do that for another six weeks. So I think I would be aligned with your thinking.
Mr. Bob, and you need.
I'm still bothered by the word shall.
So, um, that's.
Just, just to get everyone caught up where we are.
Do you see?
Sectional, so let me just read from section eleven, chapter forty-one. So this is what the law of Massachusetts says. Says in relevant part, "Within one month of said vacancy, to the selectmen who with the remaining members of, or all members of such board, shall, after one week's notice, shall again, fill such vacancy by roll call vote." Notify, did we notify the select board?
No, I, we have the thirty days to notify the select board.
Did we notify the select board?
No, because I wanted to bring this to committee.
We have to do that as a committee.
Right. Well, no, I, I, as the chair, could notify them or I could instruct the secretary, Dr. Doherty, as the secretary of our, uh, committee, to notify. I did not do that yet because I wanted to talk with the board about this issue. We ultimately, ultimately, though, Nick, we don't actually decide that, so it is up to the select board. Uh, I did want to make sure and I did check with, uh, great town council that if we take a vote tonight and we say, and our, our vote is that we feel it's not practical to a point, that should the select board then decide to go ahead with the appointment process because it is their decision, this vote doesn't exclude us from participating. The only way that we get excluded from participating in an appointment process, if the select board were to decide to go ahead, is if we don't notify them within thirty days. And, um, it was January seventh, so they're well, well within the thirty days. Cause my intention is to notify them after we take this vote and I'll notify them next week. So I, I wanted to make sure that we were protected, that if we make this vote, we can't be excluded. The only way we get excluded from the process and is, I think, I think it still doesn't even work because they have to get six votes. So I don't see how they could.
There has to be six votes.
I don't think they could do, even if they wanted to, I don't think they could actually exclude us because they couldn't get the number of votes to appoint any person without having at least one member of the school committee participating. So, um, anyway, I don't.
You need, you would need a quorum of the school committee to participate that night.
So you need at least four of the school committee to participate. I just wanted to make sure that if, and again, I did talk to our field director. This happened a number of times. It didn't seem, it doesn't seem practical. She also talked about other cases where cert, where members of committee delay their resignation to purposely to, to a point where it forces basically the select board or the committee, the joint committees not to a point because of the perception or this people's belief that by appointing someone, you give them a leverage point prior to an election. This is, I, this is in the timeframe that we're in. I don't know that I would say that that's a leverage point. But you could see that if the appointment was made, you know, six or eight months before an election, you know, then a person is going to add value to the committee and potentially that gives them a leg up on other candidates. So, I, anyway, Dorothy was just sort of going through the reasons why at times it's not practical, that there's either policy, a practical or, um, political reason why you wouldn't do that. So, yes, that's why I verified that the shall.
Yeah, two quick, two quick points. So one is, is the school committee shall or will notify. So the only way the school committee can do it is doing exactly what we're doing right now, which is to vote because we're a committee of, a group, right? So there's not six of us, there's five of us right now.
Well, no. The, the school committee shall notify the board of an, of an.
Vacancy.
Vacancy, yes.
Right.
Well, that's, we never have taken a vote to notify the board of selection of a vacancy.
Correct, and.
And, I mean, they know about the vacancy.
That's not the standard, though. It just is, we, the, the committee will notify or shall notify in the statute.
So technically, we, you could argue that we should be, should have in the past, take a vote to notify.
No, this is, this is the first time the committee has been assembled since the very resignation. I think this is the soonest we could have acted.
It, it, it basically is. The letter came in shortly before the meeting, last meeting, and I was, I personally unable to process it.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know that I saw it.
And I don't think every member even had received it. So it was, it was a little too.
So, I, I, to me, it's pretty clear. The school committee shall notify and after one week's notice, then the select board is supposed to do something. I, I get Ms. Bruski's point completely. I look at the calendar too. Are you sure it's, is the election? Are you sure it's, is the election the second or the ninth, by the way?
It's the second.
It's the second, just to update our calendar here.
Oh, it says the ninth, but...
So, but, you know, we're going to wrap up budget on the twenty-eighth, right? And then, and then we've got one meeting in February and March, one meeting in March, on the twenty-first. We've got two meetings, so, no, I completely see the, the effort that would be required. I also see it's the select board that acts to call the election or not, not the school committee. Could someone reread the motion for me?
Sure. Allow the school committee vacancy, which occurred on January seventh, two thousand nineteen, to remain empty until the election on April second, two thousand nineteen, and authorize the school committee chair to inform the select board of this vacancy and vote.
Inform them of the vacancy and the vote.
I'm having a hard time with the first part of that. I don't know that that's our call, but we could say we recommend.
I'm not comfortable putting any vote. I think all we need to do is what we've always done in the past, and notify the board of selectmen. We shouldn't weigh in our value judgment whether or not we should fill the seat.
They're at, they, they, well, let's just say, in, in thinking about this and talking with Dorothy Presser, it felt like we should give them a set, our sense, let the selectmen know our sense, because it will be very difficult to pull together this process to appoint someone for one meeting. And so, the idea was, we should give the select board a sense. Yes, they control that process.
So, could we authorize one of our members to attend a select board meeting and express what we've, the views of this committee, and just limit our vote to notifying the select board?
We, we can.
There's actually an agenda item Tuesday night.
Yes, so it was, it was...
So, I'm more comfortable with that.
Yeah, just to discuss the process.
So, to notify of the vacancy and let them know that this is the general consensus, rather than taking the vote?
I would just authorize, and we've done this in the past, where we've communicated with our colleagues on the select board, where we've authorized a member to attend on behalf of the school committee and to express a view from the committee.
Okay.
And I appreciate and respect all the work background that, but I, I, you know, I think that it can, can be kind of flimsy excuse to say we can't get boards together, whatever. We, we need, if you need to mobilize for something, you know...
I, I personally don't think that, I think you could do that. I agree. I just think this is practically, it's, it doesn't add any value to the committee or to the community to have someone come on the board for one meeting. But if, so if I hear what Mr. Boaven is saying, is that just to authorize the school committee chair to, I can attend the meeting on Tuesday, to inform the select board of the vacancy, which occurred on January seventh, two thousand nineteen?
Yes. I would support that.
And speak to this...
Well, you can answer questions that they ask. I don't have a problem with that. But it's their show, right? It's not our show. It's their show.
Yep. Ms. Doctor, sir?
I actually, I actually disagree with that because I think that ultimately, it is our committee. And I think that, given there would only be one to two meetings where that person would be a part, I think that their energy would be better spent entering the process where the people of our town would choose them. And the process, I think, isn't... I think that it's completely appropriate for us to give a recommendation to the select board, not to dictate what they need to do because it is their decision. But it's not inappropriate at all for us to give them our feelings about what we think is the best approach to filling this vacancy. And I think that the best approach is to let that person enter the race with all the other candidates and have the people choose who should be on our committee, not us. We shouldn't choose. And as much as the law says it, I don't think the select board should choose it. I think they ought to go to the people, and the person should be elected.
Well, that, and in truth, we, we're only, you can only choose that to be valid up till April second.
Right.
But we, I appreciate what you, your statement, but I don't think our decision should be based on political motivations, which is basically what you just, it should be, our decision should be on the process. What is the process? And the process is to tell the board of selectmen that we have a vacancy. We shouldn't draw value judgments on whether or not that whoever we appoint's going to provide value or is going to get a leg up on the election, or any of that. That shouldn't be part of any, any part of our decision, I don't think.
Ms. Borowski? So, I think, I actually feel like there's more consensus here. It's more about how we get there than, do you know what I mean? Like, I feel like we all, if I'm hearing everybody right. So, I think I could get comfortable with what Mr. Boaven and I think Mr. Robinson are both suggesting, which is, we just authorize you to inform the select board that a vacancy occurred. But I really like this, and actually appreciate the, it is their job to do. So, I actually, I'm hearing that argument, and I think it's persuasive. It isn't our job to tell them what our preference would be. That being said, I think Dr. Doctor brings up a really good point. It seems very plausible that they will then turn to the chair and say, "So, what would you like us to do?" And that's, it would be, we're forced to say we have absolutely no opinion on that. Imagine, it sounds like some of us do have opinions on, opinions on that. So, I think your solution, we just say there's a vacancy, we inform the select board, but we author, unauthorized, you're the chair, you're already authorized. We accept that the chair will answer any questions should the select board have it about the school committee's preference about filling the vacancy or not. Is that sort of, am I articulating where you're at?
That's an excellent statement of what I'm trying to say.
I think I can get comfortable with that. I do.
So, if we change the motion to, just to authorize the chair to inform the select board of the school committee vacancy, which occurred on January seventh, two thousand nineteen?
That's exactly how I rewrote it. Yep.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, just, my, my main concern is, I mean, I hear the cost benefit from Ms. Borowski. I hear Dr. Doctor's concerns about, and others, about kind of timing and efficiency. And to me, that's not where my mind is. It's simply with what's written in the law and following. And if it says "shall," I'll do it. And if it says "will," I'll do it. It's pretty clear to me. So, yes, so, but my, I, I hear all the considerations. For, for me, it's, it's not, I'm just trying to follow. The law is very clear. I just want to follow.
So, that motion?
Yes. So, how does, can I just do a whole new motion? Friendly amendment?
Just friendly amendment to whatever.
Friendly amendment, and for clarity, I'll reread it. Vote to authorize the school committee chair to inform the select board of the school committee vacancy, which occurred on January seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Next second.
So, vote to opt that?
Yep. So, all those in favor?
The amendment.
Right. The motion as just read.
As friendly amended.
Right. All right.
And then...
I will attend the select board meeting and be officially notifying them. Okay, I think we're at the end. So, I, oh, Ms. Wise.
Yeah, sorry. Just a point of clarification from, from the earlier statements. The November two thousand eighteen letter was about the two thousand seventeen settlement. It was not about the OCRs opened in two thousand seventeen. There are still three pending OCRs against, against writing right now.
We have not received any notification from OCR.
Okay, they're on the ed.gov site, so...
We've received no notification from OCR.
They're there.
They may be there, but we've received no notification.
From, my point is from a budget planning perspective, even if you haven't received notification, they're out there. You may want to make sure you have the budget. I'm not opposed to the one thirty. I think it's the right number overall. Considering those things, I just think it should be accounted for and thought of.
Thank you. All right. My motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn. All those in favor? All right.